Oh, all right. Welcome aboard, everybody. Welcome to the five o'clock meeting for the Palmdale City Council. If I could please have a roll call. Here.
I can hear everybody but the clerk.
And Olson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, do we know if Andrea is on her way here from Los Angeles? Anybody has heard from her? I heard that she was going to try to attend in person. Okay, all right, we do have a quorum, so we will go ahead and move forward with the meeting. I make a motion to excuse those not present at this time. If I could get a second on that, I'd appreciate it. Oh, yeah, we're so sorry, but let's add them to the to the roll call.
Commissioners Fragasane?
Here.
And Diddy. Diddy.
Here.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. And I will make the motion again to excuse those not present. If I can get a second on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they are excused and we will go ahead and step into the back for closed session.
Do you have, do you have?
All right, we will do public comments. My apologies. Anybody online for public comments? For closed session items only at this time. Okay, do we know which closed session item they want to refer to? Okay. We're having some technical difficulties, so give us just a minute.
Jason Think, feel free to unmute yourself.
Yes, council. I would just like to, I'm just curious, why is it taking so long to settle the lawsuits with the staff members? I was told long ago that that the head basically that the head people of the city didn't want Mike B. hand back. So if that was true months ago, why isn't this settled? I'd like to be able to give my services in negotiating these settlements because something's not going on. Why hasn't this been settled? The other thing is with Rhonda Perez. You know, people came out and spoke in favor of J.J. Murphy staying. People are tonight going to come out to say they don't want Rhonda Perez. Maybe the public knows more than this council and maybe the councils should listen to the residents that represent, who you guys represent. Rhonda has not, has not shown greatness at all.
Jason, this is not a closed session item.
Her contract?
No, it is not a closed session item. So do you have another item you'd like to speak to on closed session?
Well, just that, you know, just that Rhonda hasn't done anything.
Okay, that's not a closed session item, but that will be an open session if you want to discuss it then.
Okay, I'd just like you guys to make a list of all the good things about Rhonda and all the bad things and see which ones longer.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
No more at this time.
Okay, anybody in chambers that would like to speak on a closed session item who has filled out a form? No forms?
No forms.
Okay. Okay, last call for public, you have someone else online? Hi, did you fill out a speaker form? Which item would you like to speak to? Which item would you like to speak to? Interim city attorney? That's 4.5, correct? Okay, come on up and speak to 4.5. And I'm sorry, I saw your hand was up. Did you have another call? Okay. So after you, then we'll do the IT. Okay, we were having some technical difficulties.
Is there somebody who needs to go?
No, no, you go first.
It's always the same with a drill. In five minutes, you can take a hole cutter, a one-inch hole cutter and move the microphone over here. Be nice. Well, Madam Mayor, please stop me if this is not the appropriate topic. Is the interim city attorney, does that include the search and the appointment of a new city attorney?
This is your time to speak and for us to listen.
If it's considered on the, on the agenda.
I'll refer you to legal counsel.
Does this include the search for the new city attorney?
No, ma'am, it is simply putting a gap filler in while that, that recruitment occurs.
Okay.
My name's Bill Curly, I'm the gap.
Thank you, and I would like to speak briefly about the search for the new city attorney. Two weeks ago, Madam Mayor, you turned and on behalf of the whole council, you told the interim city manager to perform a national search, major search for a new city attorney. I looked to see how the recruitment was going and every day I looked and I kept screenshots of all the fact of eighteen different major search sites in students, including the city of Palmdale.org/jobs where all the jobs are posted. Not one day in fifteen days has there been a post on LinkedIn, Indeed, Monster Cut, Monster.com, even the International City Managers Association that also posts for city attorneys. They're in the letter that you received, it's printed, I listed all eighteen or nineteen of them that I searched and kept screenshots of the fact there were no results for any city attorney advertisement or posting on any of the major sites and professional sites nationally for city attorney in the city of Palmdale. I see Ms. Perez has decided to absent herself for this. She didn't do it. And a lot of us are quite upset that the fact that when you order something, if there's insubordination for no reason by her, not even starting the search, and rumor has it that she intends to appoint a friend of hers to city attorney once she hopes she's made city manager. That is not what you ordered her to do. You ordered her to do a search and a search is supposed to be performed whether you're a civilian or you're in the military or you're a federal government executive, which encompasses my history. You follow orders, ma'am. When your boss tells you, your superior commander tells you to do it, you do it. Fact that hasn't done casts extreme doubt upon the veracity of the interim city manager, her ability to follow orders and the honesty, dishonesty, I would say, to not have started this search in fifteen days after being instructed to do so for no reason. The entire descriptions, I feel like I want to wave at Eric. Hi, Eric, wave back. I feel like there's something wrong with the process here. And we deserve to have orders filled. When you make a commitment, you make an order, it has to be done. There are other things to speak on about the lack of national search for the city manager.
So I can assure you that Rhonda did put out the order to our human resources department, so I will be following up with human resources to find out why they are not on those sites.
And we would like to see that order and dated proof, not wait two months as all of the other Public Records Act requests that she delays.
I'm certainly, I'm certainly going to look into it.
Right away.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might interject.
Sure.
City manager recruitment, city attorney recruitment does not happen on the site you may think of. It's not on Monster, it's not on Indeed. There are professional recruiting firms that are used. There's a number of them that exist, but they are specialists in recruiting public agency employees. You go every city. I don't know of any city that does not. There's four hundred and eighty-two cities. They all follow the same template. When you're doing a national recruitment, you use a public agency national recruitment firm. They are not on the internet, so to speak. So I don't want anybody to misunderstand because they're looking at general sites that something's not being done. They may not know where to look and they may not go to the professional recruiter sites. But everything I've heard referenced, while well-intentioned, isn't right as far as how executive positions for cities are recruited. So I don't want anybody to think they've been ignored or your orders have been ignored. They're looking in the wrong channel.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that information. Do you have something to say?
I can provide an update that I've sent to you.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
So in the past two weeks, we have transitioned from one firm to a new firm. We have also solicited quotes from eight different national recruiting firms. We are in the process of vetting those quotes right now. And to understand exactly who we would like to contract for or with, excuse me, for the city attorney recruitment, so those are underway. In the meantime, the general drop description is on our website and is posted on our website.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other speakers for closed session items? IT?
Wilson, feel free to unmute yourself.
Hi, council. Good, good evening. I'm Wilson Trong. I'm here with the CalPra and Governor's Office Emergency Services. I just wanted to just give a quick update that we have an early earthquake warning system in California and I'm reaching out to cities statewide to better inform you all of the earthquake preparedness tool. We developed the MyCheck app. It was developed by UC Berkeley that gives alerts to residents between fifteen to thirty seconds.
Sir, this is our closed session for our city council meeting. I don't think this is an appropriate topic for our closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was a public comment for.
No, no, this is closed session. Items only regarding closed session, but thank you. We will certainly love to talk with you about the early warning system as soon as we have the opportunity.
Got it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other items? I mean, speakers for closed session items?
No more at this time.
Okay, any other speaker forms?
No more at this time.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to close public comments. All in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, oh, wait, no, okay. I didn't want to, didn't want to cut anybody off, so we're going to go ahead and go into closed session and we will be back at seven o'clock. Thank you all. Okay, great, so we finished with our closed session and I'm going to have the city attorney report out, or interim city attorney.
Special counsel, if you mind.
Special counsel.
There were six properly agendized closed session items. And none of them was any action taken that is reportable. In all of them, council was updated by appropriate staff, direction was given, and proper action will be taken. And with that, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great, and with that, we're going to go ahead and start our seven PM regular council meeting. And we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Mr. Alvarez, would you like to do the pledge of allegiance for us today? Come on up. Everybody, please stand. Thank you. And I do want to state for the record that Andrea Alakan was in closed session with us. Yes.
No, no, there he is.
Is Eric online, IT?
I am.
Okay, is there a way that we can see the council member? There he is. There he is. Okay, so tonight, we're going to start with a presentation. Eight point one is the AV Edge partnership update. Presenter will be Drew Mercy, the Executive Director of AV Edge.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Pleasure to be here.
Oh. Oh.
This up a little bit. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Drew Mercy. I'm the Executive Director for Antelope Valley Edge. That's the Antelope Valley Economic Development and Growth Enterprise. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to share our progress on the first six months of our recent MOU agreement, making Antelope Valley Edge a contractor with the city for regional partnerships for economic growth. For background, we'll start with a brief overview of our mission and purpose. AV Edge exists for several important reasons: to ensure thoughtful, diverse economic growth and development of the entire Antelope Valley; to inspire all stakeholders, businesses, industries, to engage, leverage, and cultivate the countless opportunities the Antelope Valley region offers to business; to attract, retain, and foster diverse business growth; engage in workforce development; create sustainable, quality infrastructure; and champion diversity, inclusion, and robust legislative voice that significantly contributes to the success and prosperity of the greater Antelope Valley.
Excuse me for interrupting, but I don't think you're, is it supposed to be filling in what we have on our screen? There you go. There you go. Okay.
To put it succinctly, our mission is to assist in the creation and retention of jobs in the Antelope Valley by facilitating relationships between various stakeholders, generating economic development leads, regional advocacy for policies and projects that further this goal. Essentially, we're here to serve as the Economic Development Corporation for all of the Antelope Valley, LA County, Palmdale, Lancaster, as well as Southeast Kern County. To better accomplish this task, create more accountability, and increase our level of activity, AV Edge entered into virtually identical agreements with both major cities. To provide some historical context of AV Edge and our partnership, I'd like to introduce our past president, Brett Banks, who led these efforts to create AV Edge and develop these agreements.
Thanks, Brett. Mayor Brett Nkort, members of council, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Brett Banks. I'm the Executive Director of Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District and, like Drew said, the past president of AV Edge. AV Edge now is a little over three years old. We were formed as prior to the pandemic when Veronica Knutson, from the Palmdale Regional Hospital, then President of the Greater Antelope Valley Economic Alliance, and myself, President of the Board of Trade, worked to merge the two organizations. Both of those organizations have served the Antelope Valley for decades, providing similar but not identical services. GAVIA focused on business retention, business attraction, providing the Antelope Valley with specific economic data, where the Board of Trade focused on legislative and policy advocacy, public relations, along with business attraction and business retention. While discussing the merger, it became clear the consolidation of the organization under one roof was a force multiplier for the Antelope Valley's economic development. The critical focus of the merger was to involve local government members at decision-making levels of the organization and to direct how AV Edge can provide key services to assist in the economic development of the Antelope Valley region. Prior to the, prior to the MOUs, the city supported AV Edge through sponsorships. Currently, under the MOUs, the cities have permanent voting seats on the AV Edge Executive Committee with the authority to participate directly in the development of organizational goals, creation of policies and procedures, initiate quarterly, develop deliverable priorities, and keep the organization focused on issues important to each city. AV Edge has the resources to generate economic development leads, build relationships with decision-makers outside the Antelope Valley, and effectively market the community. We're just a few months into the agreement. Drew will explain later how we are meeting and exceeding the current deliverables. I want to thank you for the opportunity and appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. In terms of our regional advocacy, AV Edge currently has six major committees comprised of industry leaders, subject matter experts, stakeholders, and influencers. These key committees include our education committee, which includes representatives from Palmdale School District, Antelope Valley College, the Antelope Valley Joint Union High School District Charter Representatives, and workforce development specialists. Workforce development is one of our key focuses here, ensuring that students and employees have access to training needed for the technical skills the jobs we're working to bring here require. Whether it's aerospace or other types of manufacturing, these tend to be skilled jobs. We want mortgage-paying jobs here in the community. And so we work with Antelope Valley College, the High School District, and others to make sure that those training programs are available. Transportation, focusing on all modes of commercial and public transportation. Potential investors want to know we have the transportation capabilities to accommodate their needs and that of their employees. We work on that. Examples include working with the areas around Plant Forty-Two to ensure that those are safe and employees and contractors have a voice. Recently, we created the Infrastructure Committee to focus on quality of life and infrastructure needs for economic development. One of our best assets here is land availability for development. This committee, led by Matt Gaines, with the operating engineers, we coordinate with the private sector, labor, and government to identify infrastructure projects needing to be addressed to put us in the best position for attracting economic development and investment. Our AeroCom Committee, one of our best-known committees promoting aerospace growth and retention with a heavy focus on US Air Force Plant Forty-Two and those contractor jobs. Aerospace continues to be our key economic driver, and in this committee, we facilitate and coordinate strategy with major contractors, subcontractors, military, aerospace startups, and federal, state, and local government. Healthcare, another key area in quality of life that investors are looking at. They want to know what we have available and have a role and voice in that process. Palmdale Regional Medical Centers, Ben Goke is the Chair of this committee. And helps ensure we have involvement there as well from Antelope Valley Medical Center, Kaiser Permanente, and High Desert Medical Group. And finally, our Tourism Committee. It's a newer committee focused on supporting the efforts of Visit Palmdale, Destination Lancaster, and the broader tourism development. We're working on several projects aimed at supporting each other in ways that have never happened before in the Antelope Valley. In addition to each city's organization working on projects, we're helping coordinate and support broader efforts. One that we've recently gotten involved with is the Edwards Air Force Base Flight Test Museum. They're working, if you've been out there lately by the West Gate, you've seen the the structure for the new museum outside of the gate. Right now, the museum's inside Edwards Air Force Base and the public can't access it. But they get calls on a daily basis wanting to find out how to visit. I've got a tremendous number of planes in history there, and this will combine with efforts to market the air parks here in Palmdale and throughout the Antelope Valley's aerospace history. One of the things that makes AV Edge unique is our broad and diverse membership and corporate and community partnerships. Our members represent a vast variety of industry and business leaders throughout the Antelope Valley, representing all major economic areas, included but not limited to aerospace. We have Lockheed Martin, Northrop Grumman, Boeing, Stratolaunch, other startups in the Vernon-Mohave area, financial services, real estate brokerages. This is key in our economic development lead generation. We'll be talking quite a bit more about developers shortly. Labor organizations, water and the environment, Palmdale Water District, AVEC, Antelope Valley Air Q and D, as you heard from Brett, healthcare, again, Palmdale Regional, Antelope Valley Med Center, Kaiser, High Desert Medical Group, and our education partners, including Palmdale School District, the college, and the high school district. Since the MOUs were adopted, we've expanded our partnerships and looking beyond just the Antelope Valley, knowing that we need to build those relationships in order to generate quality economic development needs. With that in mind, we've joined and increased our partnership with several organizations, including CAL Ed, the California Association for Local Economic Development. This provides training and networking for professional economic development organizations. The Industrial Asset Management Council, IAMC, this is one of the most effective networking organizations to be a part of in economic development, and there's a five-year waiting list to join. We're participating and going to be cosponsoring with some other economic development groups to be there at their regional event later this year. Because AV Edge is a member entity such as the cities are going to be able to participate in that. We've built a stronger relationship with GoBiz, Team Cal, other economic development organizations to expand our reach and improve our ability to rapidly respond to grant and lead opportunities as they arise. We've also joined LA BizFed, which has been a great asset already, attending several events, building relationships with the LA Basin business community. LA BizFed is essentially, it's an advocacy organization. They have great relationships both with city of LA, county of LA, and those are relationships that we can then leverage when we need something from the county as well and broader LA community. Key member benefits. AV Edge is a facilitating organization. As a forum for local and regional leadership across all industries, AV Edge has a unique ability to bring its members and partners together. We bring a relevant and collaborative approach to regional economic growth. I think the best thing that's come out of these MOUs has been a stronger relationship between our cities and our counties, united voice of Lancaster, Palmdale, LA County, Kern County portions of the Antelope Valley in a forum where we can work together for job creation. Never before have our local governments, community organizations worked this closely together and been able to coordinate efforts that boost the entire Antelope Valley. AV Edge isn't responsible for that. You and other forward-thinking leaders are. But we're doing our part to implement and facilitate this cooperation. Through our partnership opportunities, we're engaging with real estate developers and new businesses and educational opportunities. Later this year, Antelope Valley Edge will be hosting one of its first events outside the Antelope Valley. The relationships we're building now among site selectors and real estate brokers will be used to bring industry leaders across Southern California together to build awareness and promote our available space and land assets to those without experience or familiarity with our community. Relationship building is key to lead generation and our efforts to actively recruit new jobs. This event is still in development, but is part of our new strategy under the MOU to increase our activity and generate economic development leads. Some current projects that we're working on, our annual roundtable report. I think many of you may be familiar with this. In addition to the direct assistance in economic development and business attraction and retention, we continue to annually publish our economic roundtable report. By compiling data and statistics from government agencies and industries across the Antelope Valley in one place, the roundtable report is one of the Antelope Valley's most valuable tools in recruiting new investment. As per tradition, the 2023 Roundtable Report will be available at the upcoming Spring Business Summit on February twenty-fourth at the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds. In addition to the Roundtable Report, AV Edge has taken leadership in the development and publication of the first labor market study in many years. In partnership with Antelope Valley College and with support from Laborers Local Three Hundred, the labor market study will also be available at our Spring Business Summit and published every other year henceforth. We're looking at many economic growth opportunities, and with that, number one comes protecting what we have. Antelope Valley Edge is entering into a new partnership with the LA Economic Development Corporation to offer their business technical assistance to all small businesses in the Antelope Valley. Historically, this program has only been available in the LA Basin and without a local provider up here. This program connects small businesses directly with money saving programs, grants and assistance to help them stay in business and maintain profitability in LA County. In addition to that, we're focused on maintaining our aerospace industry, the growing clean energy sector, manufacturing and distribution. All of these continue to be key private sector employment generators. In addition to protecting what we have and and growing that, we're looking at new and expanded. We're missing a slide here. So, well, in addition to the existing industries that we're working with, we are also focused on adding more. Film and TV, soundstage shortages have led to more film and TV projects to look outside California for production. The Antelope Valley is uniquely poised to reverse that trend. And AV Edge is involved with working with Palmdale and AV Film Offices, the LA Film Commission, Film Liaisons in California statewide, that's Flix. AV Edge is bringing together decision makers and location managers to promote the region and seek investment for increased production and seeking grant opportunities to increase production locally. Goods movement and logistics with Kern County moving forward with the creation of an inland port in Mojave, AV Edge is working to promote the corridors along Highway Fifty Eight and fourteen for the incredible opportunities that come with increased logistic centers. This creates mortgage paying jobs in our community and by utilizing our new memberships and involvement with trade organizations, we're in a great position to build relationships with the decision makers we'll need. Workforce development. As mentioned earlier, AV Edge has long hosted the education committee with a focus on workforce development. Working together with the high school district and Antelope Valley College to keep better connected with aerospace, medical and other industries in need of specific technical skills and expand local offerings in those programs. AV Edge is connecting key industry leaders and other regional nonprofits, including B three K connecting Los Angeles and Kern County on this topic on a regular basis to facilitate discussion and program growth. AV Edge is also adding a new educational forum to our program calendar. In the past, education and aerospace and workforce development have been part of the Spring Business Summit, but due to how important these topics are, we're breaking them out into their own event to allow deeper conversation and in-depth attention. Major employers have much greater success in retaining an educated workforce in the Antelope Valley when they're trained here from local schools. Fostering these discussions and plans now gives us the time and effort needed to ensure students and residents today are trained to be the workers of tomorrow. Legislative initiatives. Again, as an advocacy organization, AV Edge Joint Legislative Affairs Committee brings together public agencies, the private sector, local chambers and a vast array of nonprofits. One of the groups that formed to merge AV Edge, the Antelope Valley Board of Trade was incredibly successful advocating for regional needs, fostering ongoing discussion and promoting projects with federal, state and local legislative leaders. As part of AV Edge's growth under the MOU agreement, we're expanding the regular legislative committee activities and creating new regular forum for members and member agencies to interact with elected officials in person with the key and with key decision makers in local industry. Look for more information on that in the coming months. We have a target date in the third quarter for that event. Grant support. We've streamlined our grant support activities to make it easier for us to provide support letters for all regional partners as well as testimonials and advocacy for the overall benefit of the Antelope Valley. We're exploring new models and methods to make ours and similar organizations in the Antelope Valley more competitive for grants by bringing in new grant writing assistance programs. This is still in the research phase and are looking in the fourth quarter to have proposals and funding within our organization allocated. The Spring Business Summit. You may have heard, you're just going to start seeing the buses, the billboards. We we have the Spring Business Summit set to take place. Friday, February twenty-fourth at the AV Fairgrounds keynote speaker is Chairman and Editor in Chief of Forbes Media, Steve Forbes. We have returning this year acclaimed economist, Dr. Robert Eiler, be addressing us and providing a specific economic outlook to the Antelope Valley. We also have David Halber with the the Film Liaison, filmla.com, locostout.com. I know you're familiar with him from the Palmdale Film Office. Those efforts are tied very closely in our efforts to expand film in the Antelope Valley. And so we'll be highlighting, he'll be giving a presentation there at the conference. Local residential and commercial real estate brokers will also be present to give a person, you know, a a dedicated analysis of the real estate market in both residential and commercial for the coming year. The city of Palmdale will again have the opportunity to provide its own presentation. But what one other thing we're really excited to do again in the way that the cities and the counties came together in support of AV Edge, we're excited to have really a first of its kind regional panel that's going to be there. And with your support, we've got Palmdale, Lancaster Supervisor Barker and Supervisor Scribner from Kern County onstage at the same time to discuss with the public these projects that we're all working on together. We're incredibly excited about that as a new part of the forum and one that's only happening because of the foresight of of your leadership. A few things to look for in the coming months, what's on the horizon? More opportunities to develop relationships with out of the area site selectors and brokers. We've increased our engagement with organizations like ICSC, IAMC, Team Cal. We're focusing on expanding growth in those key sectors, film, goods movement, energy development. As mentioned, the valleywide grant support and regional marketing. Comprehensive marketing and PR strategy to be inclusive, digital, traditional, in and out of market ad placement and herd media. And what this is is really building awareness of the Antelope Valley outside the Antelope Valley. For many years, our organizations, we put on events that have been have focused on communicating within Antelope Valley and connecting business leaders. We're really stepping up the effort and engagement with outside organizations to bring them here. The future is bright. Six months into the new memorandum of understanding, there are exciting plans for growth and increased activity for AV Edge in partnership with the city of Palmdale. As as Brett mentioned, the city Palmdale not only has a permanent seat on our board of directors, but also our executive committee. City representatives, along with other stakeholders, hold a large role in determining our projects and strategy in pursuing our goals. Next steps include expanding our participation at state and national conferences, growing our participation in real estate and development trade organizations. We're currently looking at two other key organizations with regional associations that we've not previously been involved with. Be able to share more with more with there when we have some progress. And focusing on building relationships with key brokers and site selectors. Staff from cities of Palmdale, Lancaster, Kern County, LA County, the industry and community leaders among our board of directors help set our goals and tasks for our staff. This is a great assistance in in delivering in driving us to stay focused on growth and increased activity. It's working. Economic development is data and relationship driven. Growth is based on building trust and awareness over time, and that's just what we're doing. We're also increasing services to existing businesses. As I mentioned, I think that Business Technical Assistance Program is really going to be doing incredible things in a short amount of time. In closing, AV Edge sincerely thanks the city of Palmdale for its unwavering support in creating opportunity and growth through this deep and meaningful partnership that benefits Antelope Valley regional economic growth while establishing the AV as a relevant force. AV Edge takes us very seriously, the investment from our public and private partners, understanding the responsibility public funds represent. For the investment of roughly the cost of one municipal employee, the city of Palmdale is receiving the benefits of our entire team. We brought some of them, just our some staff and board members from our partner organizations here tonight. Everything we've shared this evening with more to come as we continue to grow together. Lastly, bringing more jobs to the region isn't just about dollars and cents. One of the statistics that'll be released in the labor market study is that as of two thousand eighteen, nearly one hundred and ten thousand people lived in the Antelope Valley, but had to commute out of the area for work. Someone heading down to LA to downtown LA could be spending as much as four hours a day in traffic. The toll that takes on our families is high. Growing up, my family experienced that. My father did that for nearly twenty years. We want to change that for as many families as possible. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
I have lots of questions. So, under the new MOU, you said it's six months old. What is the contractual agreement between the city of Palmdale and AV Edge? What is the dollar amount?
The dollar amount is one hundred and fifty thousand the first year, two hundred and fifty the second year and three hundred thousand the third year.
For a grand total of? Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
And because this is Palmdale, I'm going to focus my questions to Palmdale. Who from Palmdale sits, who takes the permanent position for the city of Palmdale on AV Edge? Who is that?
It it alternates depending who's available. It's been Luis Garabey and Micah Schuler.
Okay. And when was the last time you guys came and gave a presentation to the city of Palmdale?
That was six months ago when I came here when we took the year.
But you didn't speak.
Correct.
You just came, but you didn't speak. I think the MOU says that you must be giving us quarterly presentations, so I appreciate you coming. But now we're going to put the the, you know, all of the information out there for our public because this is taxpayers' dollar. You talk about these six committees, you talk about the legislative committees. Where do I get a list of the people who sit on these committees? First of all, you can answer that.
Oh, we can provide that to you.
Okay, that would be great because we're paying a lot of money. I kind of want to know who's on these committees.
Okay.
Secondly, how many jobs, this has been going on for three years now? How many jobs has AV Edge created for the residents of Palmdale?
I don't have a raw number. AV Edge has been involved with with several lead generations and and several companies that have come to the Antelope Valley in terms of a raw number. I don't have that.
Because when we're paying for economic development, we're paying AV Edge to bring jobs to Palmdale. I would expect when you come to give a report that you would say this is how many jobs that we've created or this is how many businesses we've brought. Do you understand? I I'm a fiduciary of taxpayers' money and I expect these these questions to be answered on behalf of our residents.
Okay.
So if you could provide that information to the city council of how many jobs that you have created from AV Edge, I would certainly appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, that's that's pretty much all I have right now. You made a comment that our membership represents a vast variety of industry and business leaders throughout the Antelope Valley. If I could also get a list of who those people might be, that would be great. And I appreciate you reaching out to the LA area, but I want to make sure that it's bringing jobs to the AV and not taking jobs to the LA area. So I I want to be very clear that 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 the jobs are coming here, not going there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, again, well, I would say the message we're taking is we have the room to grow. It's it's pretty crowded down there. One of the problems that we're hearing and that they're running into is running out of space. Cost increases. That's where the Antelope Valley comes in. We've got that opportunity and that's what we're marketing.
Okay, and and you are reaching out to all types of 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 jobs, not just labor, not just union, but all jobs
Absolutely.
of every kind, bringing people and and jobs here and getting them off of that fourteen freeway.
Absolutely. We've we've had lead generation meetings with small businesses with as few as as twenty-five employees that they'd be looking to hire out here and from small businesses to large industry.
Okay. Who else has questions?
Okay, first of all, thank you for your presentation and your efforts in trying to bring jobs up here. As everybody knows, there's there's a shortage of jobs up here. A lot of us have to drive down to Los Angeles to find a job that will actually pay their bills. And I think that's kind of a sad state of affairs. We do have some good employment opportunities up here, but it seems to lie within the aerospace industry and and local government entities, but but mostly the aerospace industry, which is a great business to work in. However, it can be extremely difficult to get a job in. Whether, you know, you have the education for it or the security clearance, it it's just a tough industry to break into. That's why I think it's hard. I think it's important to get more private industry out, jobs out here and and small business. And and one thing I've talked with Drew about offline is focusing on those the entertainment industry jobs, the studio jobs. We have a lot of people that have to drive down to the studios at four o'clock in the morning to to do those types of jobs. I think it's the second or third largest industry in California. It's it's a major, major anchor and a lot of those jobs are really good paying jobs. And I look forward to us opening the Palmdale Film Stage next month, and that's going to be a big step. So I put a I put a lot of pressure on Drew in assuring that that he works with our film liaison, David Halver, to get those jobs up here because when you talk about a film production, you're talking about hair and makeup, camera, lighting, construction, driving, food, actors. The list goes on and on and on of the different types of jobs that that kind of industry brings. And a lot of those jobs are all thirty dollars plus an hour. They're all union paying wage, housing, you know, mortgage paying jobs. And I know that's one thing I've talked to you a lot about, and I appreciate you including that in your presentation and and making that one of AV Edge's priorities. I know our neighbors to the south, Santa Clarita, they have a very robust economic development corporation and which they've been able to secure a lot of jobs for their local residents. And I mean, if anyone drives down to Santa Clarita, you can see the type of businesses that are there, and those are the types of businesses we want here. And I told Mr. Mercy that that's the kind of model we want to copy. I'm not, I'm not embarrassed to say we want to, you know, copy Santa Clarita. They've done a good job with some things. There's no reason why we shouldn't be doing that too for our residents. I have no shame in that. So that's kind of the conversations I've been having with him offline. I thought I should let the public know. And is there anything else you want to you want to talk about the film and stuff like that?
You're absolutely right. And I think the the film industry presents a unique opportunity in that it is one that the state legislature has taken severe notice on. And an opportunity, we're coming up on the fourth round of film tax credits. That's an opportunity for us here. It's it's one that they that the state has acknowledged is is a problem when we see the the flight from LA to other places. Georgia, Louisiana, all these other places where they're where they're growing film production. And we're capped out in part because of soundstage shortage, but also our environment. So those tax credits are very important. With regard to to looking for it, I will, I will take any idea from anywhere else. I will copy it. And happy to take any suggestion. We don't have any pride of ownership at AV Edge. We just want to deliver.
So regarding the studios, how do we get the studios to invest in our local residents as employees as opposed to bringing employees up from the LA Basin?
Well, there's a little bit of both. One of the things that we're doing right now is meeting with those in the film industry to try to get a count of actually how many people currently live up here, but are driving down below for these jobs. The other side of it is, you know, as the film production comes, there'll be some available. One of the conversations I had with David Halber was able to connect him up with one of the newly elected high school board trustees was about developing workforce development program for arts programs, for for professional arts programs such as these technical film jobs. So I think that's going to be a key factor moving forward is is helping include that in our schools and education.
So, yeah, I think it's important. We we focus on getting those types of jobs in that industry here. I think we'll get cars off the freeway. It will improve the quality of life around here, and and I think it would help change our reputation too that we've all been looking for. I look forward, I know you're relatively new in setting all this up. I look forward to seeing the results. But I do think we need to get those quarterly reports, or maybe if you want to come back every quarter and then and then and present those numbers and and just, you know, keep us posted on how things are going.
Would be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, no questions. Just thank you for your report and I look forward to your summit at the end of February, correct?
Okay, great.
To have me out there.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number nine, waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances. Staff recommendation is to move to waive full reading of resolutions and or ordinances to be considered devoted on at this meeting. Voice vote requires a majority to. and voted on at this meeting. Voice vote requires a majority to waive. So moved. I'll second. Can we have a voice count? All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Roll call votes required.
Oh, okay.
Oh, she has council members on.
Okay.
On Zoom.
Oh, because we have one on Zoom. Right, okay.
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with council member Laura absent.
Okay, great. Moving on to item number ten, public comments on consent calendar items only. Do we have anybody online, IT? Okay, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Jason Zink.
I'm sorry?
Jason Zink.
Jason Zink, come on in.
Good evening. Thank you for holding Drew Mercer feet to the fire with AV Edge. How many jobs has AV Edge created? Three, one for him and two for his staff. So I could have done a lot more, I'm gonna tell you. He's not affiliated with California Forward, not affiliated with California Roundtable Economic Forum. What Antelope Valley needs is its own Antelope Valley State Workforce Board. We're the only region that doesn't have its own separate one. We're connected to LA. There's so much more I could have done for half the price. I just think there's a disconnect between AV Edge and this uppity group and the rest of us.
Jason, I apologize, but I don't believe it's a consent item.
I know, but I'm just saying I could do a lot more. I got a lead from a company from Switzerland that will take all the recycled plastic from LA and build panels with it that could be used in aerospace. He didn't do nothing with the lead.
Any other speakers on consent calendar items?
I have none.
Mayor? Oh, we have one online. Yes, IT?
Laura Forrest, feel free to unmute yourself.
And if she can tell me which consent calendar item she's speaking to, I would appreciate it.
Yes, number eleven point four, approved in minutes from previous meetings.
Okay.
I would like to say something that I think the mayor mentioned two or three meetings ago about minutes. I believe, if I'm wrong, please forgive me, but I'm memory, I think you said something about that instead of everybody talking, that people should be recognized by the chair, by the mayor before speaking. But what I would like to suggest is that when the mayor, or whoever is the chair, recognizes a speaker that they say, yes, Austin Bishop, would you like to speak? Or an Austin Bishop speaks and he says, this is Austin Bishop. Because the video does not show clearly who's speaking. And as the transcript now can be downloaded, I'm looking at the black and white text transcript that never says who said it. And if you're watching on the Zoom, you can download that and keep that at home as an informal unofficial record of who said what, especially if your audio on the Zoom isn't always clear. And it would be most useful to attribute people's points of view when there's discussions on the presentations or when there's going to be a vote on something and there's a debate going on, it would be essential for people to know which city council member took what position, either to know how they feel or when their reelection comes up, to be accountable to the public that we understand whether they took a position pro or con, some of the ideals that community and community member groups have. I know I asked for this about a month ago in the public comment, but I'd like to reiterate it now and ask if you could please institute this as a standard habit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. IT, anybody else?
None at this time.
No more speaker cards? Okay, I go ahead and make a move to close.
Can I just pull eleven three, eleven point three, just to make a quick comment?
Okay. I actually think that we were going to remove that from the agenda because there's some legal issues with it. Mr. Curly, if you could address eleven point three, and then I'll let you speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, public. Yes, the item, while certainly well-understood, touches on things like the city's rent numbers, its housing allocation, all of the jurisdiction of the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We have as a city obligations to produce, I think it's nine thousand units. HCD looks poorly at any action that might thwart its jurisdiction. So we want to run this by them, make sure we're not somehow irritating HCD inadvertently by looking at this protective action. So not looking to say no or it's gone, but looking to give us some time to make sure the state doesn't take it amiss.
And thank you for that overview. I just want to be clear, we don't want to jeopardize any housing and community development dollars, potential projects, you know, joint relationships. So thank you for pulling that and for following up.
Yes, but we still are going to be searching for and investing in compassionate housing for people as much as possible. And then after we review this and the legalities, we'll bring it back to council. Okay?
Okay, so having pulled eleven point three, I'll move to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second. So we're going to roll call for the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with council member Laura absent.
Okay, great. So now we're moving on to item twelve for appointments, twelve point one. Discussion and possible action regarding city council appointments to the Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly.
Can we just get a staff report on that? I think there was a little bit of confusion in terms of one appointment that we made at a previous meeting and this appointment. So can we just get some clarity for transparency purposes? Thanks. Yes, the general assembly is different from the regional. So the general assembly actually it approves the bylaws and ratifies election of officers, but it's different from the regional.
Can you just remind me who sits on our regional?
So currently, that appointment went to Lancaster. So they made the appointment on January the twenty-fourth.
Is it every two years?
Yes, so they have it from twenty-three to twenty-five.
And anybody else have any comments on that? Eric, are you listening? Do you have any comments on that?
No, I am listening and no comments.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and call for public comments on twelve point one. Anybody, IT, online?
None at this time.
Any speaker cards for twelve point one?
We have no speaker slips for twelve point one, Mayor.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion to close public comments.
A second.
Oh, no, I haven't. We haven't nominated anyone. So we get
Well, we don't have to because Lancaster, right? Lancaster has it for two years. You know, we have the general assembly.
For the general.
Correct.
And we get one delegate and one alternate.
Yes.
Correct. And can you let us know when the time and day of these meetings are?
So the general assembly, it has an annual meeting that's coming up. And if you look under discussion, there's an annual meeting that will be held Thursday, May the fourth, and Friday, May the fifth under discussion. And these are usually annual meetings.
And they're in person? Or Zoom? How are these? The reason I'm asking is because I have a daytime job, so I don't want to miss a meeting if I'm in that position.
According to the agenda, the next meeting looks like it was in Desert Hot Springs.
Oh, yeah, I cannot make that meeting. Is any other councilperson interested?
I'm happy to do it.
Oh, okay. All right.
And so you, do you want to be the alternate? Eric, sorry, Councilmember Olson, do you have a preference?
Yeah, I don't want to do it. I have too much on my plate to go to Desert Hot Springs.
All right, Andrea and Austin, you're it.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept you're not your it's not really, is it a nomination? Appointment, there you go. Okay, let's call for the vote.
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with council member Laura absent.
Okay, moving on to item number thirteen, new business. Approve agreement with Barry Dunn, McNeil and Parker LLC for consulting services for development of a parks and recreation master plan. And I believe Director Smith is going to be presenting this, right? There you are.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you. My name is Carrie Smith. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director here for the city of Palmdale. The item before you is a recommendation to approve agreement number A eight one eight two with Barry Dunn, McNeil and Parker LLC for the development of a park and recreation master plan. As you all know, our general plan was recently updated, and as a part of our general plan, we have a park and open space element. To take that element a step further, the general plan notes that creating a parks and recreation master plan is a top priority. Creating this plan is something that I've been hoping to do for many, many years, and we just haven't had the funding available to make that happen. Fortunately, this fiscal year, our major AV board approved funding to get this plan moving forward, and of course, was subsequently approved by our city council. We worked with our purchasing department to go through a request for qualifications. And that request was released for thirty days. It was sent to a hundred and four vendors. It was viewed by sixty-seven. We received two proposals and scored those proposals based on past performance, ability to perform services, cost and technical approach. Barry Dunn ranked higher in that process, and I have an associate here, Jeff Milkes from Barry Dunn, who can provide you a little bit more information about the company and the process.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tim and council members, my name is Jeff Milkes. I'm a senior consultant with the firm Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn has a number of different functions that they perform around the country. But the one that I'm representing tonight is Parks, Recreation and Libraries. Collectively, your team, let's see how well this works, there you go. Your team who will embark on this master planning process has completed more than a hundred and fifty similar plans in different communities that are similar to your community. We are going to be assisted by a couple of sub consultants. Kim Lee Horn is a nationally recognized agency, and they'll be assisting us with some landscape architect type work specifically in terms of trail planning, capital costing and the like. And we've come to an agreement with RRC Associates, which is a nationally recognized survey firm. So they'll be doing a needs assessment survey. There will be approximately five of us from Barry Dunn who will be working hand in hand with your staff. These kind of master plans, as you've recognized within your comprehensive plan, are very multifaceted. There's a lot to them. And as a result, these processes work much better when we can work hand in hand and such with your existing staff. So let's talk very briefly about what this means to create a master plan. It's a document that is a guiding, kind of a guiding pathway for your department to operate over the next five, ten or more years. We'll be dealing with things like your park classifications and your levels of service. And to put it in layman's terms, how many parks do you need and what needs to go in those parks? And we take a couple of different lenses that we view as we work with this. One is the user experience. Is the user experience what you want it to be and what your community wants it to be? And the second lens is one of equity and diversity. Are your parks and your programs and your facilities, are they equitably distributed around the city? Does everybody have access to them? What are your goals and how do you make sure that what you build and what you perform and what you provide in terms of events and facilities are meeting those kinds of lenses? We'll be looking at gaps in service, and we can map things, everything from, you know, your playgrounds to sports fields to overall walkability. How far do people have to walk? Can everybody walk within a quarter of a mile, say, of their homes? We'll be looking at all of that. We'll be looking at your communication strategies. Attempting to say, how do people communicate and how do they prefer to be communicated with? We'll open up the hood that is the funding for your department, and we'll look at what strategies perhaps can be implemented over the next five or ten years. We know that within your city, the landscape is changing, and we need to ensure that your parks and recreation program have a plan that will be right in lockstep with the changes in your community. We'll be looking for strategies for achieving the outcomes within your comprehensive plan. But also, how do you implement what will come up with, what your community will come up with in terms of your long-term master plan? So basically, the plan will inform future revisions of your comp plan. There'll be a lot of detail, probably more maps and charts and tables than you can imagine because there is that much detail that goes into making those decisions. We know that it's an important responsibility that you have and your staff has in terms of how you allocate and prioritize funding. And so we want to make sure that you have all of the data and can make the best possible management decisions. But we know while the plan is forward-looking, we also know that every step of the way starts and ends with the engagement within your community. Because every community is different, and our plan is to create the most robust community engagement strategy as is possible. And I'll give you some examples of that in a moment. But there are some phases, some tasks are kind of oriented toward four different ways. Once we kick the program or kick the project off, we'll go into information gathering mode. There'll be a full community survey. The survey will be both statistically valid with invitation, but also there'll be an open link that is offered to your community, and we will encourage as many, but many people as possible to complete that survey. But we'll create that survey based on initial engagement with your community and, of course, with your team. We'll be looking at stakeholders, interviewing yourselves, talking to other folks in the community. Who are the leaders that are out and around that have a stake? And also, who are those folks that may not have a stake? We really want to hear from everybody. And the engagement process for information gathering really starts tonight. And it won't end until you gavel down and say you've adopted this plan. We go from there into findings and visioning, and the findings and visioning process will will really take everything that we learned in information gathering and unpack it and repack it to figure out what are the goals, what are the objectives, what are the strategies, what are the policy changes? And then really, I think, most important, what are those actions that the department's going to embark on? We'll bring draft recommendations and a draft plan. With every recommendation comes operating costs as well as capital costs. We know that a plan is only as good as there is money to implement it. And so we'll tie that to your current resources and say, what are these things we'd like to do in the future? Well, if there's funding available, then let's move in those directions too. Again, we will help you prioritize long-term, short-term, midterm opportunities. At each of these phases, there's an opportunity for a community meeting, a public opportunity to come forward, listen to what we found, and really provide additional engagement. And very important for us is the community to confirm what we've learned. And anyway, at the very end, we bring a plan to you, and at that point, we've got a process in place to help the staff to understand what we think in our experience are the best practices for implementing the plan. A plan is of no value if it sits on the shelf, and we know that. Now, just to take a moment and reiterate some of the things I said with targeting community engagement. Again, there's lots of different ways to do it, and it may be that we'll be at events and intercept intercepting people with intercept surveys. We know that we've got our regular survey, we've got We've got key leaders, stakeholder and focus groups will be doing. But we also know that your community has certain districts. And we want to ensure that they're represented and that we take the engagement to them so that everybody has a seat at the table. Here's what you get for your investment. The inventory and assessment of the park system and your facilities. Heaven forbid you should have a, a national, natural disaster. Well, if you need to call on FEMA, they, they require a, an inventory of your park system. Well, this inventory will give you that tool to be able to move forward. We will look at your operations and maintenance assessment. And we will do what we can to provide some national and regional comparisons. But at the same time, what are those practices that other departments around the country are doing that may be able to provide you efficiencies? We'll dive into your recreation program and, and ask questions about what the community desires and needs. And we'll break that out by individuals from different ethnic backgrounds as well as where they live. We, with our needs assessment work, we can even decide, we can even take a look and see what do people desire in terms of sports fields who own a dog? There's that much opportunity here to kind of slice and dice the data set when we get into it. We'll look at your organization and your financial assessment. And we'll look at the strategies there. We'll look at, again, how do you implement and how do you move forward once you get this plan in place? From a timeline standpoint, we're right now in the initial project planning in February, assuming that you would vote to approve the contract. We would hope to have something before you in November. You'll note that this is not, that's not the only time that you'll see the plan. You'll hear, you'll hear from us on a continuing basis with updates as we will be checking in as well with the staff on a, on a very regular basis. Again, you can see that there's quite a bit that goes on. We've tried to simplify the, the phases here for the purposes of, of our visit tonight. So here are the things kind of our promise to you. Well, listen to your community. And what your community tells us may be very different than even what you learn, you know, even what people think or desire just up the road in your neighboring communities. But, but this is their plan. This is your community roadmap and, and that's where that, that comes. And we'll place a real priority on ensuring that even the silent or especially the silent voices. That's the nice thing about our survey process is it does capture those both that are users and those that perhaps might not be users. We'll bring national experience, but a very, very local perspective. And I think that's important because this plan is catered, you know, only and directly to the, the, the needs and desires within your community. This will give you a tool to help celebrate your community. You'll be able to say, well, in this, in this part of the city, we need a new pocket park, or we need to improve our, our components and, and such in the parks. One thing that sets us apart from others is that, that we don't just rely on a standard of you need so many acres or so many parks per people. We, we inventory and we look at every single component. We score everything that's in every one of your parks. And from there, we can provide you a roadmap that says in this neighborhood, these are the things to do to improve the level of service to your community. It's a very customized, it's a very customized experience. Again, we'll be, we can, we are prepared to stick to the schedule as much as we can. But I can tell you that we also can be flexible to meet the needs as your department desires. So I've tried to be brief because I know you have a lot on your plate tonight. But we thank you for allowing us to help partner and embark on this important journey. So there are two of us listed on the slide. Mr. Deal couldn't be here tonight. He's your project manager and, and I'm, again, will be the senior consultant. I'll be here for each of the steps of the, of the project as well. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for your presentation. I do have two quick questions. You indicated that you're going to be designating five people to this project. You are not a local company, correct?
Well, actually, there, there's going to be more probable for sure. But, but there's mainly five of us who are going to be playing a, a different role at a different time.
Right. So my question is, are those five people plus going to be local folks? That would be familiar with the ins and outs of our community?
All over the country. I, I'm, I'm out of Portland, Oregon. Well, one of us is out of Virginia. One of us is out of Kansas. And we all embarked to, to create these plans and depending on where they're at.
So people from Kansas and Virginia are all going to come here to assess our parks?
At, at different times. The, the, the folks who will be doing the inventory actually come out of their office in Colorado.
Okay, so no one local is on your team?
Well, no, no, we have our, our sub consultants that will be our local, our local group. Kim Lee Horn, who will be doing some of the assessments and like, I think they've got three offices here in the Los Angeles area. I think Riverside Orange and, and right in, in Los Angeles.
But again, no one in the Antelope Valley, correct?
That's correct.
If I can just encourage you to hire folks locally who know the ins and outs of our community because they're the best to, to inform those that are developing this master plan as to, you know, what the needs of the community are. If we're importing people from Virginia, they may not know, you know, a specific concern. So I just, I don't know if we can mandate that. But I would encourage that we incorporate some local hiring into those that are going to be contributing in, into this development of the master plan.
If, if I may, we are really a partnership between us and, between Barry Dunn and the department. And the, the local perspectives there in terms of what, what a lot of those needs and desires are come directly from the, the director here and, and others.
Okay, so, so you're just sort of a supplement to?
Yes, yes.
Our local parks and recreations.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize if I didn't make that clear.
Understood.
So if I can, we'll have a, we'll have a project team that will work with Barry Dunn and, and, and the sub consultants. The project team will consist of a member from our CIP department, a member from our planning department, myself. We'll have a, a diverse team. And, and as Barry discussed earlier, we're going to have mental, many opportunities for the community to share with, with, with us the desires they have for our park system. Barry, we've received the two proposals, Barry Dunn and K T U A. Both of these companies are very well known in the parks and recreation industry. Barry Dunn has done, and, and so has K T U A. They've done many, many, many master plans to include cities in California. This is a company that, that has employees that are all over the country, as Barry just, just elaborated. But I feel like with the, the key stakeholders and the involvement with you all in our community and the support of, of a project management team with staff, I'm, I'm certain we can collaborative, collaboratively work together to accomplish our mutual goals.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that there is a local component to the development of this master plan.
Okay, good. Don't, don't go anywhere because now we have to call for public comments. So if you guys could just sit tight while we let the, the folks come up and make some comments, I'd appreciate it. IT, do we have anybody online?
Thank you.
Yes. Laura Forrest, you'll be to unmute yourself.
And this is for thirteen point one.
Correct, thirteen point one. Thank you for the presentation, sir. I wanted to ask a question about the local people which, um, Assembly, I'm sorry. I'm speaking in the wrong jurisdiction, which Councilmember Alarcon raised. I was about to ask the same question. I was concerned, although I've lived in a number of those cities and states that he mentioned, they are pretty far away and have different cultural aspects, different park needs, different climates, where some of them shut down in the winter. And we have more round year, rear round opening parks to use. However, in the summer months, you know, how hot we are here. And there's a lot of local, just environmental aspects that need to be fully known and understood. I'm glad that, that Carrie Smith's department is going to be closely involved with this. But I also think that the consultants should stage at least two people full-time during the pendency of this contract to actually move in and live here so that they, as the primary liaisons and the experts in developing a master plan are intimately familiar themselves and not getting it secondhand or thirdhand from others. I think that should be a part of the contract. The second thing is, I noticed that there's no mention of the culture aspects of the park and recreation activities. After a lovely meeting with Carrie Smith and George Davis last, or two weeks ago, after I made a suggestion for involving the community in and the people who might otherwise want to be taggers and graphic graffiti artists to involve them in developing some kind of mural system. I also spoke to a very, very talented artist, Rich Gallego, who said he's going to be doing about three small murals on our library. Part of our parks would be an excellent place to put more murals. But there's nothing in this mention about culture. And also, I know that the department that Carrie Smith heads used to be called Parks for Recreation and Culture, and that was removed several years ago. And I really suggest that the council restores the word culture to their department name because no one knows unless they, they look up, well, where, is there anything, anybody handling culture? And Carrie Smith's department is well equipped to manifest our, our cultural aspects and to help develop them. And as an integral part of this master plan program must have culture and the arts included. Thank you.
Thank you. IT, do we have any other callers?
No more at this time.
Do we have any slips for this item?
Yes, Your Honor. Jason Sink?
Jason?
I am happy that we are doing a master plan finally for the city of Palmdale. Because I've always been an advocate for preserving our landmark properties, our diamonds of the city. We still do not, have not preserved Lake Palmdale, the land around Lake Palmdale, Una Lake, Indian Ponds, Palm, Pa- Palmento Historic Park. None of this. They, they could develop it right now. A lot of people probably don't even know about these places that are, that live in Palmdale. I also agree there has to be a local person appointed to this. But what I'd like to see is an actual standing park and recreation culture, historic preservation and environmental citizens committee. I mean, most other cities have this. This isn't like something I'm asking that's, you know, far-fetched. So I, I think you guys need to appoint somebody to the citizens park committee to be part of this. Also, I want a requirement for an interactive map so people can make comments all over the city. We should have had that for the general plan. I advocated for that. We didn't do that. And that's why the general plan's messed up today. The other thing is our website, our Parks and Rec website is terrible. It's, I just don't get it. I know I could do a better job. I mean, if you just really observe and pay attention and look at other cities and stuff. I mean, this isn't hard stuff. You know, again, I'll go to AV Edge. We paid six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to them. They missed the grant. Six hundred and fifty million dollar grant was up, was communities to go apply for. AV Edge could have applied for it. City of Palmdale could have applied with them. And that, they could have got the grant from the state instead of it coming from Palmdale citizens' pocket. It could have came from the state. Do you see, it's like? That's why I get frustrated. Everyone's like, boy, Jason sure is upset all the time. When you see ten years go by, then it's like, come on, when are we going to get with the program? Like, we don't want to go against our city or a city manager or anybody. We want to be with you. We want to be a team. But it's always like, it's the citizens against you guys. And I'm tired of that. But I support this measure, but we need a, a citizens committee. Thank you.
Other speaker parts?
Yes.
Mario presents.
So I do want to talk about this. I'm glad you guys have a master plan for the Parks and Recs. I've lived here for thirty years. I didn't see anything about the environmental aspect of the Parks and Recs. I've mentioned several times, maybe third time's a charm, harvesting rainwater. We live in a desert. Are these parks and wrecks going to be designed to capture this rainwater? I know Marie Kerr Park was one of the first parks out here to do that and to actually recharge our local water aquifer. We know that we share an aquifer with Hinkley. If you guys aren't familiar with Hinkley, we have to make sure that our table stays high enough so that we don't contaminate our own water. One thing I found very interesting was Ms. Alarcon very quickly asking if people were coming in from outside, coming in from outside. But that seems kind of hypocritical, you know, given your past and the information that I've shared at the last meeting. I really want to see a good master plan. I really want to see Palmdale grow. I really want to see our natural places preserved. I was at the riding rink in Barrel Springs. I went actually horseback riding on Tuesday. And I found out that that little rink is not maintained by you guys. It's maintained by the community. It goes to show that you guys actually are paying, are playing a, a supporting role in this entire process. And it's sad that we have to come here and ask for things. And it's sad that we come here and there's rope at the front of the, of the, of the building to keep people out or to control people because you seem to think that this group is going to, I don't know. We saw you shuffle in quietly quickly because we were outside. This community is a very strong community. It's a very faithful community. It's a dedicated community. And it's a long-lasting, longstanding community. We take big offense to people coming in from outside claiming that they are part of our community. We welcome outsiders into our community. Our community is enriched from out, by outsiders. But outsiders who pretend to be basically natives.
Let, let's, let's keep it on point.
I know.
Okay.
I know. As, as a native, I want to talk about this. Okay. As a parent who watched, whose actual, whose parents Melo Roos tax paid for Marie Kerr Park.
Okay.
I want to talk about this. And I want to be allowed the time to talk about this. So it's very offensive when people from outside come to our community and start asking questions. Oh, are, where are you from? Are they from Kansas? We know the truth. And it's about time that the rest of the community knows.
Are there speeches?
No, no, ma'am. No more speakers for thirteen point one.
Okay. Council, would you like to make comments on thirteen point one?
Yeah, I'll chime in with a couple, couple of small things. Well, anyone that's been, that lives in Palmdale and has been to some of the parks knows that over many years, City of Palmdale's taken great pride in its parks. If you look at our parks compared to some of the other cities around, you can tell that, you know, a lot of them, we try to keep them very well maintained. There's a lot of open space. And we, the staff is putting a lot of time and effort in keeping our parks, keeping our parks up to date and, and, you know, as good as possible. It's been part of the culture here for years. And I think we have staff that could even speak to that. That's been very important for us. We have a lot of people that come in from out of town for soccer tournaments. I've heard from some of our hotel partners that during soccer season, the hotel rooms are completely full. And you'll be lucky to get a room on Saturday or Friday night or even Sunday because there are families that come in and they play soccers in the field. So a lot of, a lot of tourism, a lot of people coming in that, that use our, our soccer fields and our parks, which is good for us because it, it brings in tax dollars and jobs. And they eat at our restaurant. They fill up their gas here. That's, that's all tax dollars for our city. So it's important that we take care of our parks. And I'm glad we're, we're creating a master plan. I think all communities should have a master plan. Once again, I'll bring up Santa Clarita. They're a master plan community and they've done a fantastic job. So when we set these master plans into place, we, we put things in a motion, just not for next year or five years or ten or twenty years down the line. So whether it's this council or the next, or the next staff that comes in after us, these, this plan is here to preserve what we're doing now, which is trying to take care of the parks. I will say, and I know it's easier said than done, is I'd like to see the grass kept greener at these parks. I know it's a challenge. But I know staff does their job along with some of our contractors. But I hope we can work into that to where we can keep the grass greener. It's, like I said, easier said than done, keeping grass green in the desert. But, but something we should really be focused on as, as well as some of the other maintenance issues that we get into. But I know that plan will address that. But I know that, uh, that our staff over the years has put a lot of time and energy and has taken great pride in. But I know that, that our staff over the years has put a lot of time and energy and has taken great pride in making sure the city has some of the greatest parks around, and it shows just for the fact that so many sports teams come up here to play their tournaments on the weekends. So I'm very grateful that we're putting this into play, and we can preserve the quality integrity of our parks for many years to come.
Thank you. Eric, do you have anything you would like to comment on?
No, I just will reiterate what Austin said. A friend of mine was talking to me about Palmdale. He says, I haven't been there since my daughter's soccer days. So that's a great point that Austin made, and I'm, I'm happy that we're, we're working towards this and maintaining our parks.
Great. So, so yeah, parks are really important, and that's why we do have the recycled water board. We were trying to bring in the recycled water to our parks. Of note regarding the Hinckley case, for those of you that are not familiar with Hinckley, that's the Aaron Brockovich movie. And most of you, in fact, I would guarantee that nobody in this room knows that my daughter, my, my father, my biological father was a victim of that, of the chromian. He lived in Hinckley, California, and that is what caused him to die at 58. So that's, that's really near and dear to my heart, but we, we have to har- harness our water and use it responsibly. And I believe it was today that the governor passed or suggested legislation regarding the Colorado water issue that five states are now battling over Colorado water, which is going to affect our parks' plans and our housing element probably. So we're going to have to tweak what, what we design now with our parks could be different a year from now based on what happens with the Colorado water issue. So we're, we're going to have to be very prudent with our use of water, both in our homes and our parks and our personal use, quite frankly. So I just wanted to bring that up, and Jason, raise your hand. So I, I kind of got the impression that you were volunteering, right? And part of our parks is not just active parks, but passive parks. I think, Jason, that that's where your preservation and our Joshua Tree Pres- Preserve comes into play. And I hope that, Carrie, we can incorporate some passive parks where we don't have a, a lot of activity in fields and swings, something that people can walk through, preservation, something to maintain the integrity of the desert, the, the poppies, the Joshua trees and that type of thing. So if you could just address that, I would appreciate it.
I would love to have some more designated open space for our city. We've got some great environment that we need to protect. It's unique to our community that we want to make sure it's available for many, many years. So would love to include that.
One quick thing. I know one of the newer parks in my district turns into a lake when it rains. So I've gotten emails from some residents like with these pictures of what looks like a pond or a lake, and they're like, what's happening? And I'm like, don't worry.
I think they're designed that way.
No, they are designed that way. It's, it's designed that way. It retains, it holds the water and, and, and it does his job as, as a temporary reservoir, or I don't know the technical term for it.
It's retention basin to rehydrate the offer, right?
And they play soccer. Yeah, they play soccer there when it's not, you know, raining, but man, does this thing really fill up with water?
I remember many years ago, we actually found some people jet skiing at Marie Curran Park in one of the basins. So yes, they do fill up.
They really do fill up with water.
Any other questions?
So regarding the, when we talk about the park designation, the type of parks, within that, would a historical or preservation committee or park or facility or museum, do any of those fall within our parks, wrecks, and possibly culture? Finally?
Well, maybe, Jeffrey, when I, have, have you included historical elements in park plans?
Because I've been wanting a museum for a long time to represent the Antelope Valley and Palmdale especially. We have a lot of history here.
Well, the structure that you desire and your community desires will become part of the plan. So i- if, you know, the suggestion is that the cultural element be placed into, you know, as a division within the, the department, and then those questions fall under that, though definitely would be a recommendation, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any more questions, comments?
Seeing none, move to approve the con- the contract as presented.
I'll second that.
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alarcon?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Okay, so now we're moving on to 13.2 to approve employment agreement number A dash eight two one eight between the City of Palmdale, Rhonda Perez to serve as city manager, and we will now call for public comments. So IT, is there anyone online?
Yes. Laura Horst, feel free to unmute yourself.
Good evening again for the third or fourth time, a prolific speaker here. I have provided to all of the mayor and mayor chairman and council members a email written today, which summarizes a lot of the previous problems with interim city manager Rhonda Perez, which have been brought to your attention. To make it a little bit easier, I would like to propose that you abide by the pledge, the promise, and the expectation that you made to all the people of Palmdale. Last, I believe, I have the exact date in August, when you were speaking about you were going to have a national search to reach out within a professional executive search firm, such as Mr. Curly is also aware of, and which would then create a national search for the highest quality, most qualified slate of candidates for our position, the permanent city manager. And it's been the expectation of everyone in Palmdale who heard that or who's been informed about it since that that is what will be done, a national search. And at the time, the three who are now sitting council members, Mayor Bettencourt, council member Bishop, and our absent council member Loa, all agreed with, also with Juan Correo and Steve Hoffbauer, that you would perform a national search, but you would defer the date for the national search until shortly after the November election, in your words, so that the new city council sitting could have its input and decision into the conduct of the national search and into the end reviewing and vetting all of the highest candidates. Some of us now expect, and I think the whole city would benefit by you abiding by that plan that you announced at that time, and forego any action on this contract tonight. It may be a good contract or not, but it does not necessitate having the name of Rhonda Perez in it when we haven't seen all the candidates. So please change back to and abide by the commitment you made to the city of Palmdale for this ultimately important position to do your national standard, high level and national search. Thank you.
IT, do we have any other speakers? IT? Speaker slips?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how, how many do we have? I only ask because I thought it would be helpful to have them start lining up instead of waiting for everybody to sit down and then stand up and sit down and stand up. So if we could call maybe the first three speakers and, and have one come to the podium and two stand behind so that we can get everybody's voices heard.
Certainly. The first three are David Harris, Chuck Murphy, and Betsy Haslett.
Come on down.
Good evening, council. Madam Mayor. So a national search, what does that entail? That entails at least three months of preparation, six months of looking, then a decision month, then a higher month. Then a person comes in and they observe for their first year, then they start making changes their second year. So really, we're already talking about two years from now. Six months ago in August, when you pledged to do a national search, I probably would have agreed with that. Six months into where we are today, I'm working with the admin office. I got to tell you, I don't agree with that. I, Rhonda made some comments. She followed through with them. I've worked with the admin office, Tracy Cooper, Mike Miller, on multiple conversations about the future of the city of Palmdale and the nonprofits. I feel really good about it. And I've been a nonprofit worker for over 30 years. Works for some of the largest corporations. And I, I support Rhonda and your decision tonight. And I know I don't agree with a lot, and I'm very vocal about that. So when I do agree, I want to make sure I'm just as vocal. Most of the people in the room probably will disagree with me on this decision. I still respect their opinion. I still respect who they are. But I needed you to, to know where I stood on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, I'm Chuck Murphy. Music and Kids is my organization, and we run Gabriel House for Palmdale. As a nonprofit, we've been working for seven years with, with Gabriel House. We've been here going into our fifth year. And I, I can look at last year. I'm also on the Measure AB Committee. And last year had me just constantly going crazy over grants and how to, how to manage things properly and make things work. Two people that I know here, other than the city council that were here working at this, some working very hard to make things work. And some not working so hard. I want to welcome everybody that's new here. Put that out there. But two people that worked heavily in, in getting the Measure AB money distributed to those who got it, were Mike Miller and Rhonda, focused night and day on trying to make something work. And Rhonda was doing this during a period of time where we've had all kinds of community people coming out here and, and referring to her as just as somebody that shouldn't be here, which I don't, I don't even understand where they get that idea. I mean, as I sit in city council meetings, I hear some people saying, well, we need to search all over the country. No, we need to keep it at home, where we have people that live here and understand what our issues are. We don't need to reach out and, and bring in strangers. The gentleman that was here before me was absolutely right. It takes forever for somebody to understand the problems. She's been here understanding the problems. She's been in the Antelope Valley. Then there's another thing we hear about is Lancaster. Someplace in her life, she worked for Lancaster. Well, we've all worked for people, and we've done things at times that, you know, I mean, we did them. We experienced them. We move on. We don't get judged. We shouldn't be getting judged for things that we've done in our past that may be positive, maybe negative or whatever. We're trying to move forward and be better in, in the world, you know? And let's give Rhonda a chance to do that. She's been, she's been working hard the last year, and I think we, you know, that I've seen, and I think we should continue letting her do that.
Thank you. Next three speakers.
I, I called Betsy Haslett. I do not see her at the podium.
She, she went home?
Okay, I'll go to the next.
Okay, next, next three.
Rossi Cherry, Gigi Talks, and Sandy Corrales.
Yes, you're first, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you? City council members, I am totally in favor of Rhonda Perez getting this job. I heard a conversation about national search and all these things. I've had a pleasure in engaging Rhonda on behalf of nonprofit, having young adults in this community, a very diverse young adults from all backgrounds who really need a lot of support and a lot of help. She has a great plan for how we can better engage that community, how we can reduce crime, public safety, bring more workforce and training to this area. And so I'm all for it. I think that oftentimes, we don't give people a second chance. We judge them by how we think they should be and how they're really doing their work. I've been at that spot before. So I served, been at that spot before. We have to judge her what she's been doing now. What she's been doing now was getting out there in, in our community, forward-facing, engaging our community, engaging those folks who serve in nonprofits and small businesses, those who are really trying to work hard and get better in this community. We all have to serve and get better. We all got to get better. I, I, I've tried to get jobs many times before I couldn't get that job because somebody opposed me on that job. So I understand where they're coming from. But at the same time, I want somebody who's going to be, who, who loves our community, who cares about our young people, who cares about what we do in our community, and has the courage and a vision and leadership to be empathetic, to engage, and have the skill to lead. Right? And so I don't care how, where you come from in this country. If you come here and you can't lead, and no one wants to follow you, it doesn't matter. And so I want to know that I'm going to follow you with my young people, right? We're going to support you. We support Palmdale all the time. Laura, I'm sorry, Laura, Mayor Bettencourt, everybody else. And so that's what we do. That's what we should do. We should give her a chance. Not look for somebody way out there and we don't even know who they are. Right? Why not, why not allow us to serve her as she's trying to serve us? It goes both ways, the give and take. That's a win-win for us, right? And so let's just do that. Let's allow Rhonda and her team, because they, they have some great ideas about how to better service community. Five, six years ago, we were doing some great, I've been here for a lot of city managers, a lot of city managers. I've seen some do great work from outside the community, and some who just struggle to understand their culture, the needs, and what we're trying, we need here in Palmdale. She gets it. She gets it. My young folks say she gets. I'm here on their behalf. I serve young adults, 16 to 25-year-olds who've been through some stuff. And so she gets it. And so on their behalf, if my organization advanced communities together, we support Rhonda, and we hope that you go ahead and hire her as, as the contemporary stuff off interim out of there and let her be permanent city manager and let her do her job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Why did Rhonda Perez go on a trip for Palmdale employees on the Palmdale Dollar when she was not an employee of Palmdale? She started in October 2021. This trip was in August 21, 2021. Yes, there are receipts. The city council is moving Rhonda into position as city manager without a national search of anyone else who might be qualified as city manager. Rhonda wrote her own contract with the help of former city attorney, but without any involvement from the Human Resources Department. Do not allow Lancaster's tentacles into Palmdale. On January 18th, Rhonda was instructed by Mayor Bettencourt to immediately conduct a national search for a city attorney. Where is that posting? As of noon today, there is still no posted job search. And Ms. Bettencourt, you previously commented today on fiduciary of taxpayer money, so I would like to share the definition of fiduciary relating to a duty of acting in good faith with regard to the interest of others. July 2021, $28,000 of Palmdale money paid for AV Country Club golf memberships for our city council members. Hoffbauer, Loa, and Bishop refused it. Thank you very much. But it was allegedly accepted by Correo and Bettencourt. Yes, there are receipts. I won't go into the Measure AB money and the legal funding of nonprofits. And since Ms. Bettencourt, you like to quote the Bible, I read an earlier email, Judges 2125, "Every man did which was right in his own eyes." I would be happy to support the city council that was honest, followed the law, and actually represented the citizens they were elected to represent. I do not want Rhonda Perez to serve as city manager of Palmdale.
A point of note, I just want to say that no city council person accepted any membership from the country club. I have only been there one time in my entire life, and that was with the League of Cities to receive an award. I don't golf, and I've never been to the country club, so there would be no reason for me to ever accept a membership there. Point of fact. Yes, Mrs. Corrales, please go on.
Good evening, Mayor Bettencourt, Mayor Protem Alarcon, and city council members. My name is Sandy Corrales, and I rise in support of Rhonda Perez as our permanent city manager. I am a 35-year resident of Palmdale. I have literally attended hundreds of Palmdale City Council and Planning Commission meetings over the years. But you haven't seen me lately because I refuse to be part of a circus or a zoo. And that's what our city council meetings, quite frankly, have become. That is the perception, that is the image that we are giving out there. I have been so saddened and embarrassed from previous leadership that has allowed such division. From previous leadership that has allowed such division, distraction. And encourage those only interested in political theater into our council meetings. I believe Ms. Perez is the right person at this very pivotal time in our city's history. I speak with all types of residents every day. I talk to business and community leaders. I talk to elected officials. I talk to young people. I talk to my old timer friends. And the overwhelming consensus is that they have expressed confidence in Ms. Perez. I find her to be a very strong woman. Who is accessible, capable. Personable and professional. I myself have participated in nationwide searches as a school board member several times. And I have to tell you that at this time, I feel that our precious taxpayer dollars could be better spent. We don't need an expensive exercise that many times results. In hiring someone who does not know or understand our city's unique history and its culture. As evidence from some of the concerns that you just heard a couple of minutes ago regarding parks and wrecks. Ms. Perez is a longtime community member with deep roots in Palmdale. Our city is in need of stability. Not uncertainty and chaos. I promise you that I will continue my very public record. Of promoting and protecting our great city of Palmdale. And I ask council members to put our city first before personal agendas. Before partisan politics, before outside interest and approve Rhonda Perez as our new city manager. I am encouraged by our new leadership, its maturity and discipline, and this new chapter in our city's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, we have Mario Presents, Jason Zink and Tracy Cooper.
Okay, if we can have you guys line up. Mario Presents, I think is first, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then Jason and then Tracy. Thank you.
So I really don't think that Rhonda should be running the city manager position. Does anybody know what the average salary of? Anybody in Palmdale is? The city of average salary for citizens of Palmdale is about eighty-seven thousand dollars. Now, city managers make a little bit more money on average. In California, they make about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Rhonda made two hundred and thirty thousand dollars working for the city of Lancaster. Her new contract is upwards of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. That is what we, the citizens of Palmdale, are going to pay Rhonda. And when you add taxes, it puts you over three hundred thousand dollars. You were asked to leave your position at City of Lancaster. You weren't fired. They told, they found something and told you, you probably should quit. And Palmdale picks her up. Benton Court gave you a direct order. As a city manager, it is your job to do what the mayor tells you to do. And when the mayor asks you to do a national city, a national search for the city manager position, you should do it. You at this point should be fired for insubordination, for refusing to do your job. You, we know, are married to a wonderful patriot who protects this community. While that person was overseas. We hear that you lost your position in Lancaster. I'm not going to say why. But I have a platform and I'm ready to use it. I'm ready to share what's going on in my city. Because the video that I shared today of the happenings that happened two weeks ago, when I was finally allowed to speak. Today has a hundred and eighty thousand views on social media in six hours. I am not afraid of a city council and I'm not afraid of a investigation into my work. I speak truth. I speak from the heart and I speak very honestly. I hope to see this recording in the FOIA request or the CIPRA request that I submitted to the city. I've emailed all five of you. And the city communications office requesting for all this data. So I'm excited to see what you have to say.
Jason Zink. My title is her best just isn't good enough. Uh, listen to the residents. Listen to what our normal city council would do. They would do a national search to find the best for their city, right? They wouldn't just pick somebody just because it's convenient. And that's what you guys are doing. Why wouldn't we want the best? Maybe Rhonda's good. She has a show, mate. But. Maybe there's somebody out there who's exceptional and deserves the three hundred thousand dollars. We can still have Rhonda. We just don't need to give her a contract and a one-year salary if she does something wrong. So we can keep on going until June. We'll do the national search. We'll look at, you guys will look at the best. And decide who should be city manager. That's all we're asking. That's all we're asking. Something that's normal. That's all we're asking. We do not want this chaos between the city council and the people. We want to be on your team again. We want to be together, but you guys have created this, this wall. And I'm tired of it. This is your opportunity to do what's right. The parks, her background is parks. Our parks have gopher holes, dirt patches, dead grass. That is not because of we're living in the desert. Uh, the drinking fountains don't work. Our website's terrible. Uh, everybody knew J.J. Murphy, didn't they? They don't know who Rhonda Perez is in the community unless she got money from the city. Uh, Doc Mock, he wanted to do a six million dollar project. Did she call him up and say, hey, let's see if we can do something? You want to invest six million to do a commercial center and storage units and bring some jobs and sales tax to the city? Let me see if we can work on something. She left one point five million dollar county measure J money sitting on the table that could have been invested in the youth of our community. And she still hasn't done nothing for the next round. You talk about small town Phil, Mayor. How is it a small town Phil feeling when you can't even talk to anybody in the city? They don't want to meet with nobody. You know what I'm saying? I have thirty-two lots, paved road, west side where everyone wants to live, all utilities. And she doesn't even want to go over there and look at the thirty-two lots. And Mike Miller either lives right down the street. You don't think I'm pissed? Here we have nine thousand units that need to be built that are lacking in our community and they don't even, won't even meet yet. Seven o'clock in the morning, three o'clock. What good are they? I've been asked for six months. Richard Lloyd agreed to meet me there, but why haven't they?
That is time, sir.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm Tracy Cooper and I'm an employee here at the city in the city manager's office. I express my support towards your approval of item thirteen point two. The employment agreement between the city and Ms. Perez as city manager. I thank you for considering this. And I look forward to continue working under Ms. Perez leadership.
Thank you.
Marcia Ann, Christine Parkinson and Irene Eaton.
Okay, come on down and one come to the podium and two line up. Oh, okay. Do we need to, before the speakers begin to speak, do we need to take a break? Counsel?
I could use a break.
Okay, I apologize, you guys, if you could just take a seat for ten minutes. Ten minutes and then we'll let you speak. Thank you. We'll be reconvening in just a minute, so if everybody could nestle in and take your seat and get comfortable.
Oh, I'm sorry. There he is hiding in the dirt.
Okay. Could you reread the names of the three next speakers?
Certainly, Mayor. Marcia Ann, Christine Parkinson and Irene Eaton are the next three speakers.
Okay, come on down, first person to the podium and the other two in line. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to take a quick break too. I'm sure that the the council and the audience both appreciate it.
Good evening. Um, nice to see you all. I, you know, I really had to think about this before I stepped forward because this is not about me, obviously. It's about who has been hired on. And as a manager, I put my manager's hat on and I got to think about. How I would hire someone into a position. Where at some point in time she was an assistant, you were a city assistant manager, right, in Lancaster? And so to become a city manager here, then I had to say, what is it that she's done? What have you done? What are your, what have you brought to the city in Lancaster when it is bankrupt? When there are reasons why this ACLU had a problem with homelessness, but it goes back to vouchers. And if we're talking about vouchers and we're talking about energy, then we're looking at people right now who are struggling. With the energy and the energy crisis that we have in this country. I know there are a lot of crises. The homelessness, the energy crisis, and how much it costs to run a home, how much it costs to live. And so it seems obscene. It absolutely seems obscene to write your own. Your own. Um, salary and expect everyone here to agree to that. Now, there are a lot of nonprofit organizations that I have to say, at some point in time, I wondered who they were benefiting. Who are they giving money to in nonprofit organizations? It makes me angry. Think about it. It's great that we have nonprofit organizations because they pick up where some people cannot pay. But ultimately, are they helping themselves? Are they helping themselves? Who are they helping? Rhonda. You know, if you're going to think like a real human being.
Please make sure you're addressing me.
Okay, Laura. Well, I mean, look. No, Laura, I have a little bit of an issue with the fact that lotteries, they don't do well. Lotteries, you know, the vouchers, the section eight vouchers out of Lancaster. Do you know how many people were homeless because they were in a lottery waiting to receive funds through section eight? That's, you know, that has to do with the fact that we have so many homeless people still on the streets. Some of them were struggling from that. Others are accepting the fact that the government is going to support them. But I'll talk to you about Rhonda. So I can't believe, Laura, that you, as someone who seems somewhat sensible. Would allow someone to write their own contract. Do you have anything to do with that? And then to believe that it's okay to ask for two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Is is that the timer?
That is.
Oh, sorry. Okay, time is up. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I I don't need your help, so.
Thank you.
I need to respond to a lot of misinformation we're hearing.
Is your, is your mic on? I can't see him.
I believe it is. That may help people understand. First, your process of recruitment is very normal. A city manager isn't like you're you're hiring somebody to work at Home Depot or to go check for gopher holes or what have you. City manager is a policy implementer, the city council's policy. They have a staff, they have department heads, they have consultants, they have experts. City manager has to be at that higher level and manage all of these. Your city manager candidate here has been doing it for a year. She's proven herself as that ability. You you come then to the, there was discussion. There was discussion about, gee, for, uh, we want to have a hometown person. We don't want people flying from Virginia. You have that. But the biggest error I'm hearing, the city manager, Rhonda, did not write her contract. She did not pick the number. Whoever thinks that's the truth is flat wrong. Way it works is this person reports directly to the council. The council, I believe through a subcommittee or council representatives negotiated with. The candidate came up with the terms that they thought approved and unacceptable for the city. I've been doing city attorney job for thirty-six years. I've seen and I've written dozens and dozens and dozens of city manager contracts. This is quite standard. All of our internet friends, go hunt them all up. They're all the same. As far as dollar rate, this is a, I'll call it a high desert bargain. You hit Orange County or L.A., they're looking at four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar contracts. Because I am the city attorney right now and I'm trying to educate you. Upon a title, sir. You're, you are speaking with ignorance and I'm trying to correct it. She did not write it.
Take a quick recess.
So.
No? Okay, let's, let's let him speak and then we'll have some.
The council worked and negotiated separately with the city manager to come up with these terms. They are then presented. They were not drafted by Rhonda Perez. They were reviewed by the prior city attorney who put it together. I reviewed it. It is a standard. It is a standard city manager contract. You may not be used to those. You may have never seen one. I've seen plenty and this is standard.
There's no engagement. He needs to continue.
An executive position doesn't get recruited like I'm going on Monster or I'm going on Indeed. The council will reach out to whom they think is appropriate. If that requires a national search, they'll do that. If they believe they have somebody competent, somebody experienced. To run the organization, they give them that opportunity. If it doesn't work out, they can be disengaged. But this is the way local government works. It just is. I I I'm somewhat stunned. That it seems to be such an unusual concept of how it's done. This is routine.
Next speaker, please come on up.
I'm wondering, are you from Lancaster also?
No ma'am, I'm from South Orange County.
South Orange County that have a lot more money.
And I represent clients statewide. I have clients up north, down south. I've been representing clients statewide. Stop it. I've been representing clients and this is the way it works.
You're not supposed to engage in dialogue during.
I am not a council member.
That's right. You're on the board. You're sitting upon the dais.
I can explain to you.
Okay, let's, let's stop the engagement and could we restart her time? And. Go ahead and direct your comments to me. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, obviously, I'm here in opposition of the city manager position being offered. I would like to see the official posting of the position and list of qualified applicants that you have interviewed. I would also like for the vetting process be made public for Mrs. Perez. While it is public knowledge that the existing city manager resigned her position on bad terms from Lancaster. I asked, did you resign willingly or was it given that option in lieu of termination? Regardless of the co-author of the contract, there seems to be nothing in the contract that is a benefit to the city. Other than an at-will employment. Section eight of the contract says employer agrees not to terminate the employee during a hundred and eighty calendar day period after a city election to allow the new. Elected council the opportunity to observe and work with the employee. If that is the case, shouldn't the newly elected council work with her for an additional hundred and eighty-eight days? Hundred and eighty days to see if she's the right person for the job. The contract also mentions a three-year contract roughly nine hundred thousand dollar base salary. And while that may be affordable in Orange County, it's not affordable here. If the contract is terminated, Perez would receive a one-year severance pay. So in theory, after that hundred and eighty days, she can potentially receive four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in pay. I do not understand the city's negligence for proper, properly seeking out and vetting potential candidates for this position. I urge you not to offer the permanent position until you have done. I urge you not to offer the permanent position until you have done your due diligence. And then also, may I ask, since we're on this subject, why is a nonprofit on the Board of Measure AV, as he stated earlier, seems to be a conflict of interest?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Irene Eaton. And I, I reside in Sun Valley, California, and I'm visiting up here and I'm a member of Palmdale Freedom Coalition, which I'm very proud to be a part of. It's We the People and we are very involved in politics. And as a concerned citizen, I, I support all the communities and I want the best for their communities and show whatever support I can. And I, I do not approve of this vote and I hope you will take that consideration. I'm learning a lot about Pa- Palmdale politics and learning about this uh, person, Rhonda Perez. And I do not support her. I do not want her to be elected and I encourage you not to vote for her. And there is other good people that love our community and it's, and the people would support somebody else, not this person. And there was a wonderful woman that ran for office, actually your opponent, but anyways, I would nominate um, uh, but I've just, I'm learning about her and she's a very wonderful lady, Erica Alverque. And I, maybe you should nominate her.
I thank you for your time. Next speaker.
We have Diane Brett Banks-
Diane?
And Juan Blanco.
Okay. Did you put a p- a slip in?
Can I speak? I'm not from Sun Valley. I'm from Palmdale, but can I speak?
Uh, as soon as the speaker cards are done, I promise you, you'll be able to get up and speak.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I understand that Ms. Perez came to Palmdale as an assistant city manager in two thousand and twenty-one after she was requested to leave her position with the city of Lancaster. She was assigned as interim city manager after the dismissal of J.J. Murphy. I've heard that the salary she has been offered is about three hundred thousand a year, yet the average income in Palmdale is eighty-seven thousand. In checking what the average salary of the city managers in Los Angeles area receive, according to Glassdoor.com, as of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the average salary is one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. On Salary.com, the California average is a hundred and twenty-three thousand. That was effective as of December the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. According to the state of California, Oceanside, a city with a similar population as Palmdale, pay their city manager two hundred and seventy thousand a year. My questions are, why hasn't a national search been done, as you previously said it would? And if you take the average salary of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, Mrs. Perez's salary would be a hundred and seventy-seven thousand over the state and LA area averages. What additional qualifications does Ms. Perez have that warrant so much more money?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak in support of Mrs. Perez. As the Executive Director of Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, we've had the opportunity to work with her in business retention and business growth. And I think that she brings a local community support that we need. I'm a little confused by some of the speakers that are saying we need to have local community folks and now they want to do a nationwide shirt, search. We have our local community person here that has deep roots in the community and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Hello, sir.
From town, council members and staff. Uh, my name is Juan Blanco. We've been, my wife and I have been in this community since nineteen ninety-six. We have been involved for the past twenty-six years and everything that has pro- gone on in the city of Palmdale and somewhat in Lancaster. And we have been through several city managers. We've been through several councils. And I can honestly say that this particular moment in time, the woman that's sitting as interim city manager should become the city manager. She has worked diligently. We have sat and communicated about things in our community that need to be accomplished. And I think and believe and certainly support Ms. Perez as a city manager. So I will read this thirteen point two. Approve employment agreement number eight, eight two one eight, between the city of Palmdale and Rhonda Perez to serve as our city manager. Thank you very much.
Do we have more speaker cards or should I let Mr. Hill get up and speak?
We have more speaker-
We have, yes. Hang in there.
I have uh, Phyllis. But I do not want to mispronounce your last name. Thank you. Um, Dan Jacobs. Andrew Mercy.
Thank you.
Hi, hi. Um, Mayor and City Council, I'm here to endorse uh, Rhonda Perez and I took some notes, so I'm gonna read them. Uh, my name is Phyllis Fregoso. I'm here to endorse Rhonda Perez as city manager. I'm a longtime resident of the Antelope Valley. I've worked and still work with the public, private and government sectors. I know Rhonda and have known Rhonda for probably thirteen years. She is a great leader. She's committed to this community. She will work collaboratively with all people from all angles of this valley. And I totally endorse her for city manager of Palmdale. We would be missing it if we didn't endorse her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name's Dan Jacobs and I'm the CEO of the Antelope Valley Fair and Event Center. And I would like to speak on behalf of Rhonda Perez and her employment contract. I have known Rhonda and worked with her for over ten years, I believe. And I um, could testify that she's very knowledgeable, knowledgeable individual. Um, I have to say that uh, over the last two years, uh, our organization has developed a much deeper relationship with the city of Palmdale government and a lot deeper than we have in the last twenty-nine years that I've been CEO. And a lot of that is due to Rhonda. And I would also like to say that um, I know and I know you know very well that deep relationships, good relationships are what drive success of an organization. And I have to say that Rhonda, as a local, has developed those deep relationships, those quality relationships that I believe the city of Palmdale needs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Uh, I'm here to support Mrs. Perez's uh, hiring. I've known Mrs. Perez for, I had to count about seventeen years. We met in a professional development and community service organization uh, back in the mid-two thousands. And uh, since that time, have worked with her in a variety of professional capacities uh, on boards and commissions and on behalf of my, in my prior roles, working and representing several of our state legislators here. Uh, Mrs. Perez has always maintained an incredibly professional demeanor, uh, has shown a strong commitment to this community. I've personally seen her volunteering her time throughout those years to make this community a better place. She also has a breadth and depth of knowledge of municipal government uh, that is unparalleled. An incredibly strong work ethic. And uh, I would uh, just conclude saying I've worked uh, and interacted with at least two dozen uh, local government, city managers, superintendents, water district managers over the years. And she has the qualities of the best of them and the most important to me, being that she is vested in this community. Not someone looking, come in for a few years, move on, but she's part of this community and I think you would be very well aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes. Madison Norris, Vicky Ventura and Marcos Alvarez.
Come on up.
Hi. I just wanted to say that I have known Rhonda for many years and I've had the privilege of working with and learning from her and she's been nothing but a great mentor. And she's a wonderful person who cares very deeply about our community. And she has my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Get this microphone down. No?
There you go. Oh, no, it goes down.
It does.
It's just low, like-
Slow, like me.
I was gonna say, like me.
There you go, right? I like that. Thank you, Austin. Good evening, council, city council and Madam Mayor. I stand here in front of you to ask um, that you would approve Rhonda Perez to become our city manager. My name is Vicky Ventura and I am the CEO for the Antelope Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I was given the opportunity to be the CEO of the Antelope Valley Chamber of Commerce because I knew my community. Because I've been serving the community. I believe that's what Rhonda has been doing for the past year, serving our community. She knows our community. Um, Councilwoman Ali Corn, you said and you requested from Barry Dunn, McNeil and Park Elsie to hire locally, right? So why don't we hire locally? She's right there. Why bring somebody else from who knows where? That's not gonna know our community, that's not gonna have those um, know, have those relationships, right, with people in our community. We already have her in front of us. And I believe Rhonda's well overqualified. I believe that she deserves every penny in her contract. So I urge you to make that contract happen. I love you. And we're here to work with you and everybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Marcos Alvarez.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Um, I'm not gonna fall into the trap of alleged political theater. I'm only gonna go with testimonials and current, not past and not future, experiences with Ms. Rhonda Perez, your current interim city manager. There was an incident that took place about three weeks ago, right here on the east side of Palmdale, that resulted into someone being assaulted. Not once, but twice. Their corn was thrown at their face. Their machine, their cart was thrown at them and they stole their money. Now that's dear and important to me, so I reached out. And one of the first few people that answered was Ms. Rhonda Perez. She didn't ask for any uh, credit on what she was about to do, but she wanted to know how she can help. That's the first thing that came out of her mouth. Hey, they have three children. How old are they? Male, female? She was on it because it was a few days from when? From Christmas. Right? Again, I'm not gonna get caught up in the past. I'm not gonna get caught up on political fear. I'm gonna tell you what I experienced personally on a volunteer humanitarian that didn't need to do what she did. And she helped. And she put them in a better place days before the most important holiday they will all experience. Not only did she do that, but somebody else here, to the tune of Mr. Miller, joined in and said, let me see what I can do. So there's a lot of positive things that are happening in this new council. One of them being is Rhonda Perez, regardless of a checkered past, because we all have it. So I'm entrusting what the majority of the citizens of this city put in this city council that you will make the best choice and that's clearly not in your interest, but in the city of our community. And we are here only a fraction of what the city represents. This entire room is one thousandth percent of the city that live here. So let that not be the sole deciding decision on what decision you're coming out today. And I want to thank you, Ms. Perez, for doing what you did and Mr. Miller. But I believe this entire council is in the right hands moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We have Carol Ross, Amy, and I don't want to mess up your last name. But she knows who she is. And Kristen Shields.
Okay, come on up.
Thank you. I'm Carol Ross. Um, I believe that a national search should have begun about a year ago. It seems like a lot of time has been wasted. I know there have been people that have come up here and said, you know, at this point, why should we? It seems like it would take a lot of time. But I think that it should have been started a year ago and so to say, well, because we kind of wasted time. Now we just should hurry up and jump and not, not do a search. Um, it's not unreasonable to ask for that from people that we've spoken to who are city managers in other cities. Um, that is how they were recruited, was through a national search. So I don't think that's unreasonable and your constituents have been asking for it. Um, I would like to just comment that if Rhonda is the most qualified um, for the job, wouldn't a national search reveal and confirm that? Um, it is what your constituents have been asking for and it is what the city council agreed to last summer. So then that leads us to a point of how much do we trust what the city council is telling us? If you're promising things to us, but then you're not following through on it. It feels like we have been just led on to hush us and to keep us quiet, to keep us out of your hair. But you have no intention of doing some of the things you say you're going to do. Um, as I'm listening to this, I, this is what I see in my mind. Dollar signs, a lot of dollar signs. Dollar signs is what I see. It seems that um, many who are against the national search um, are nonprofits who right now are receiving money from Measure AV. Uh, and I do find that very sus- suspect. Uh, we have heard from one gentleman today who has said that, I know, I, I believe his, his group actually did get some of the money. If not, they were in line to and yet he was also, he's also on the board or the committee uh, that was put together to decide who gets Measure AV. That does seem like a, a conflict of interest uh, to be, have some say in who gets the money and your organization is one that you're trying to get money for. So uh, I, I, that, that I find really bothersome. I want to just really quick testimony to, another gentleman gave testimony. I'm gonna give a real quick testimony. My husband and I um, have served as volunteers for seven years in the city. We put on a amazing Christmas event for many years. Even last year, we lit the, the uh, park with uh, Palmdale Freedom Coalition, who actually came out and did that. Um, it never cost the city anything. This year, when the city was about to do Christmas things and lighting, I repeatedly called the city and said, we have lights. We have a lot of stuff. It wouldn't cost the city anything. And we heard crickets. In fact, we were told from this, from someone in the city that Rhonda actually told them, do not involve PFC or the Rosses. That is terrible way to treat somebody who volunteered for seven years and it cost the city nothing.
I, I do want to say I loved your Christmas programs, so.
Well, we tried to-
I, I appreciate that. I just want you to know that we, we did not forget. Next speaker.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Amy Shad Camion.
Easy for you to say.
Um, I'm a staff member, proud staff member. I proudly serve this community. Um, I'm so excited to raise my two daughters in this community. And I, when I started working here, I began same time Ms. Perez did. And I have to say, my experience, I want to share my experience with you as a staff member, what it's like working with Ms. Perez. It's amazing. Um, she's professional. She's knowledgeable. She's experienced. And we all know we have difficult jobs and sometimes you have to make difficult decisions. But she makes it with such ethical passion. I remember in the beginning of my career here, a few meetings I had with her and I was just so impressed in the passion she had for Palmdale. The decisions that she made was in the best interest of Palmdale. Sometimes you make decisions as city manager or mayor and you do the best decision that you have to do. Some agree, some may not, but ultimately it's for the best decision of the community. I can assure you, as a staff member working with her, every decision she's made is for the best interest of this community and for her staff. I, I personally have heard that staff members, some staff members may be scared of Ms. Perez. That is not the case. I'm not scared of Ms. Perez. I enjoy working with her. She has an open door policy. What scares me though is not having Ms. Perez at the helm, not being city manager. That does scare me. She's a leader. She's experienced. And I hope that you approve this contract. I look forward to working with her throughout my career. Thank you. And thank you for the time and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hey, Pro Tem, Mayor, or wait, Madam Mayor, I've been dying to say that to you.
Thank you.
Council.
My name is Kristen Shields. I'm a staff member here at the city of Palmdale in the Communications Department. I'm here to set the record straight. There was something that was put out on Facebook and it stated that the staff was terrified of Rhonda Perez. That we don't respect her and we're scared. Nobody on this staff is scared of Rhonda Perez. We respect her. We admire her. She is an amazing leader. She respects this community. She wants to work with this community. The walls that are being put up are not by staff. We love and work for this community. We we work to better the lives of the community members and Rhonda Perez, that's all she wants. I've worked with her for the last year. I work in the Communications Department, which is right next to her. She, I, I, she's, I can't even say enough. Amy said it perfectly. But she's respectful. She's professional. And her goals remain steadfast and that's to benefit the city and to do whatever she can to benefit the residents, to be fiscally responsible. And that's pretty much it. I I recommend hiring Rhonda permanently.
Thank you. Next speakers.
Catherine McLaren Gomez, Atharine Blanco and Michael Gardner Gonzalez. Thank you.
Hello.
Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I, I rise in support of Rhonda Perez. She is very passionate about what she does. She helped us merge the two entities into what AV Edge is. And having someone that comes from our area, you can't get that in a national search. You can occasionally, but what everyone's not realizing, the cost of a national search is a lot of money. And then sometimes you don't get someone that will fulfill what we really need. We are a unique area unlike anywhere else. And that's when you need someone that knows the ins and outs of the community. Please, I implore you to do this contract, make her our city manager. And then I hope everybody in here, for the sake of the betterment of our community, after we've all had our chance to speak, that the decision that you guys make, that we all support you because that's what our community needs now. If we're going out and bringing economic development to the city, we need to show that our city council and our communities all working together. Nobody wants to come to a city too that just says, come, bring us your business, but we don't want the people in Lancaster to come, only the people in Palmdale. We have to have them be willing to come and bring something that all the areas around can participate in. So I implore you and I know Rhonda will do a great job. So I hope that's the decision and I really hope that the rest of the room, we're all in this together. Let's find a way to work together even though we have our differences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down.
So that you guys noticed I was on.
Yes, we noticed, we noticed.
Good to get that out. Sorry. Hello, I'm Atharine Blanco. And good afternoon to everyone. I am the Secretary for Coffee for Vets. I want to talk about the veterans. The veterans are in the AV. We are the largest city for veterans. Besides JJ Murphy, who stepped up to even look at our veterans, to even appreciate them in the, in the ways that he did. After he left, Ms. Rhonda Perez stepped in. I have not seen a city manager that has done that prior to those two. Three days before Christmas. Well, let me go back to the veterans. She comes to the meetings. She meets with our senior veteran community and speaks with them. The things that she has promised and committed, the, uh, not only to our senior veterans, to our World War II veterans. She comes out and meets them. And let them know, you know, that she is there for them. Three days prior to Christmas, I got a call from a church that says, we have six families that are in need of Christmas. We are run out of funds. We have nothing, but we need something. So they called me. I called Rhonda. I said, listen, this is what is happening. And each member had about three to four kids. She went shopping that very day out of her pocket and I know it was out of her pocket and took those gifts to those family members. You tell me who does that? I mean, seriously, I mean, seriously, give a call to anyone that says, three days prior to Christmas, I need families that needs Christmas. I am in support of Rhonda. I've worked with her for a year, very closely with her for a year and planning things around our veterans. She has definitely stepped up to the plate. So if nothing else with all of this saying, the veterans do have a say in all of this. And I am here to say, we are voting for Rhonda Perez.
Next speaker.
Hello, Laura. Can I see you? Well, well, I've been here in the city of Palmdale for thirty-six years and I came in nineteen eighty-six. I'm a senior pastor, Victory Outreach. I've been a senior pastor for twenty, twenty years here in the city of Palmdale. I own a home, I own a business here. And, um, I love, I love the city of Palmdale. We work hard to make sure that this city is maintained well. I see, I know Mike Miller and some of the other people. I've known JJ Murphy. I've also met Rhonda. And leaders know leaders. I see a leader in her, leading this community. I back her up one hundred percent. I could have had a whole church here today. And you know me, I'll bring everybody. I had a hundred and eighty-nine people last Saturday do a prayer change for you guys, for the city, for the police, for the, uh, first responders, for the, for the schools. I could have had a whole team here. I didn't want a circus. I didn't want a, uh, uh, craziness. I wanted order. So I said, I'll speak for the five hundred people. She's a great leader. I stand with her. I back her up. Our five hundred people will back her up. If you want to have another meeting and bring them, I will bring them. They will come. So I vote for her. I see a great leader. I sat down. We had lunch together. And she listened to us. She listened to our plan. She's ready to put it in practice, not just for me. I don't get paid from you guys. You guys don't pay me nothing. I don't get paid a penny from you guys. But, but I love you guys because you run this city and you run it well. And I thank you guys for that. I pray, I pray that you guys vote her in. We've been praying for her as well. I know people are praying. We've been praying for her as well. We're gonna see her as a leader and lead in our community, leading our city, her, Mike Miller, and the rest of the council and the team here. We back you guys up. You have us, our support. And thank you for listening to my little voice, this little guy. He's not a big guy, but he has a big heart. And he's willing to do whatever he can for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your prayer change. Next speakers.
That is the end of these.
Of the slips.
Speaker slips.
Mr. Hill, I think you want to speak. Sure, absolutely. Go ahead and, and. You too? Oh, I'm sorry. I, okay. Rich, come on up. You, you have been standing there a while. The podium is open. Please come up if you want to say something, so. I'm sorry, Rich. I did not realize that's why you were standing there.
No, it's fine. No problem. So, um, as I'm standing and listening to all this and watching it, you know, I know that some people think of our group in very negative ways, but, um, you know, we're, we're not without empathy at all. We're good people. We're loving people. Um, so there's a couple of things I need to say. And one is, I gotta say, I don't envy Ms. Perez having to sit here and listen as people talk about her personal life. Um, it's a difficult thing. And the fact that you haven't broken down in tears is impressive, so you have my empathy, that's all I can say. I don't think she's a three-headed monster. I don't think she's the devil. I don't know her well enough to think much about her personally. I have said before and I will say again, PFC's main problem with Ms. Perez being the permanent city manager is her ties to Lancaster. Now, there are people who say, well, that's in the past. Yes, it is in the past. So is yesterday, but we don't discount everything that we know about somebody or everything we learned about things because it happened in the past. That's ridiculous. She did live under bad terms. And I won't discuss what they are either, although I have some knowledge on it. But character counts, especially in a position like this. And I haven't seen that character demonstrated that would warrant her being made permanent. Now, we've also been told that we shouldn't be concerned about Lancaster and having undue influence here. Well, that's fine, except that I know for a fact that at least three of our council members had their campaigns, at least in part, some large part paid for by the mayor of Lancaster and his family. In fact, Ms. Alarcon, one of the first things she said when she was sworn in was, I want to thank Rex Paris. So if anybody thinks I'm off base worrying about that, I don't know what you've been paying attention to. The other thing is, when Ms. Alarcon turned in her candidacy paperwork thirty-three minutes after the state imposed deadline and ordinance fourteen eighty-three here locally, I was given a story about how that happened, but the problem is there's nobody at the city level that has the authority to extend that deadline. Yet she ran. She's here now. Is that Rhonda Perez who let that happen? Because if it is, she let the, left the city open to very likely another lawsuit. And I hear always talk about fiduciary responsibility when we're talking about twenty-eight thousand dollars, but nobody seems concerned about ignoring state and local law that opens us up to another lawsuit. So forgive me if I don't quite understand this. I do not support her being made permanent because there are ties still to Lancaster. They are real. That's all for now.
Thank you. Would you like to come up, Mr. Mr. Hill, or would you like, who's next? Come on up. Let's, let's. And then, and then, and then you can speak. The podium is open. Please come up.
Somebody just said, deep relationships drive success. I guess that's true, but those could be corrupt success or that could be corrupt success. I recently moved here from Ventura County. I'm disappointed to learn how badly the Antelope Valley, including Palmdale, is managed looks. Somebody else spoke about greener grass at the parks. I'm not used to seeing dump furniture and trash everywhere. I oppose Rhonda Perez because this seems like a good old boys and girls club. Two hundred ninety-nine thousand is excessive. And she didn't put out the search as told, it seems. That's enough to convince me that she shouldn't be automatically permanent. Additionally, maybe these meetings wouldn't be a zoo as someone referred. If people with criminal records, tax liens, evictions and judgments weren't up running the show.
Next speaker, podium is open. Going, going, gone.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead, bro. No, you got a suit on. You gotta go.
Come on up. If, if no one arrives at the podium, we'll close public comments.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, sir.
Does this, does this come up any further?
I, I think it comes up a little higher. Little higher.
Okay.
It's very slow.
All right. Listen, uh, my name is Steve Hill. A lot of people in here know me. I've run for office a couple of times. And, uh, Ms. Rhonda Perez, they, every, everybody sitting here speaking about you like you are some type of inanimate object who doesn't possess the ability to speak for yourself. All I have is one question. Do you care about the people of the Antelope Valley? Thank you. That's all we need to hear. We got it. We, we, people here that know me know how I feel about
stuff.
Stuff. Yeah, let's just call it stuff. But, uh, anybody here that knows this community, who's been in this community, has dealt with this community. And I've, I've been here for thirty-two years. I came here working as a state correctional officer. My wife has been teaching for twenty-five years in Lancaster. We have too much division in this valley. We're dividing the people. This community is sick. I started driving Uber and Lyft to support my campaign because I'll be running for Congress. But this, this, the stuff I hear from the citizens in our community going to that Tarzana Treatment Center, the things I hear about the kids in foster care, the, the, the young kids who tell me how they got pistol whipped and robbed in Lancaster and nobody hears them. I can tell, I could hear by the trembling in their voice. I can hear the fear. They're scared to live in their own community. We got way more bigger problems than the two cities fighting against each other. Stop this bullshit. We got too much going on. The community is sick. That's why we have so many churches and five oh one C threes acting like vultures on the community because I've owned Anaverty Real Estate appraisal for twenty years. It's been some kind of clandestine program to bring people up here from Air City and put them in the Antelope Valley. Well, that's not working well. One of the first things they teach you at the California Department of Corrections Academy is that when you put a prison into a community, you change the demographics of that community. And that's just a nice way of saying our, our prisons are full of blacks and Mexicans. Our schools are sick. Our people are sick. Do something. I congratulate you on your new job.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My, my name is Dr. Woodrow Anthony Roback. I'm a veteran of twenty-one years of service. I spent time in this community working and assisting in Department of Veteran Affairs. I'm a assistant pastor at Vicryot Beach Palmdale and a pastor by Gonzalez. And I'm also a business owner here at a private practice for mental health services. I want to say that as I come into a community and I look at what is possible, what's possible in a, a community is when people recognize that there's opportunity for improvement. When people are ready to come together and build and find ways of being a part of something rather than attached from it. When there's people that come into this community that's ready to do something to make a change and impact. I had a great opportunity to meet with Ms. Perez a few months ago. And I was amazed to hear not only her interest in making a difference in our community, looking at plans and, and looking at ways of trying to communicate and connect with people, to partner with people and to find ways to improve. And these are realistic concepts that she has, that she has a true heart for the people. You, you can see this based on a conversation you might have. Now, many people that came up here today haven't had a personal connection or conversation. They're doing things based on information they might have heard, whether they believe it's true or not true. But having a personal conversation to sit down with this individual made me understand and recognize that this is a person that has a true interest in this community. She understands what's needed and she's willing to take those steps. And she's looking at people who are not oppositional, but say, let me find my way of being a part of something rather than finding ways to disrupt it. I think that affected communities are those that can find many voices. And I've served this country for twenty-one years so that we can have a voice. And it's great to have a voice. But is your voice supporting the needs of our community? Or is this finding some reason to find opposition? I think that we'd be making a terrible mistake in not giving Ms. Perez an opportunity to show who she is and what we can actually be, our opportunity to build something together and be effective as a community for our future and our children's children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Ross. First, I'd like to apologize for my outburst that was uncalled for, and I ask for your forgiveness, sir, Mr. Curly. I want to read this because
Likewise, back to you, sir.
Thanks, sir. I just want to read this, because I get these at least every other day. And this is from a staff member. It's not my words. Staff do not trust not only Rhonda and Miller, but council as well. Council keep asking for names. No one will speak up because of the threat to their livelihood. Look at what's happened to anyone who has spoken out against them. They fear, the fear among employees should be their top priority. Instead, they continue on their path of self-preservation. Their ignorance of what they're being told speaks volumes, and we're watching. That's from a staff member, man, it's not for me. And, and I get those constantly, but that was one that was very to the point, I think. A, a good leader brings things together. That's what they do. We've been talking about this for months. We have not had a meeting with you guys. You've never called us in to speak with us face to face and really hear what we have to say. We've been, we, we've held back so much that we've been told that we could bring the table, but we're not going to, because we're decent human beings. We all want the same thing. You know, people talk about the past, people talk about their times they've served in the military. My dad was in the military for 22 years. He was a two, two-tour Vietnam veteran. I suffered because of that. My family suffered because of that, so I've got a stake in this too. My point is, is that leaders bring people together, and this has pulled us apart, because we haven't gotten a fair shake. You know, Laura, I'm sorry, Mayor Bedden Court?
Sorry.
Um, you, when the AV, Measure AV Money came through, I remember you saying, "A handshake is a deal. We made a deal, and we got to keep our word." Well, you did the same thing with us, you did the same thing with everybody else in regarding the city manager. So where did the change come? I don't think that's fair. I think, as you said, we're just asking for a fair shake. Now, I will say to everybody that has, has disparaged PFC, these ropes and stuff up there, because we've been told that, that we've been doing weird things out there. Nobody's gone through anybody's anything. We are nonviolent, we've never done anything violent since we've been here, never. Not once. We've been violated against. We've had people spit at us. We've had special interest groups stand out there and call the women of our group whores. We had a guy drive his Jeep into us. And we have maintained dignity, and we've been good people. But we're getting tired. We're getting tired of this. You need to bring it together. You need to bring us together and do the right thing. Do what you said that you were going to do. Can I just say one last thing? We all want a good community. All these people that think PFC doesn't want a good community, we do. We're just coming at it differently. We're passionate about it. We want the right people, and we want to fight for the right people. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, city council members. Every time I have come up before you, I have always just asked you to do the right thing, to be true to yourselves. Just like he mentioned, you have spoke before, Laura, about your word is your bond. First of all, don't think we don't pray for all of you. We spend many hours in prayer for each and every one of you. I'm not here to attack her. I am here to question once again, "Let your word be your bond," which is something you say you stand for. But your word was that you were going to make a national search for this, and you did not do that. Once again, you did not keep your word. That destroys trust. And even had you done it, it wouldn't be a problem with her applying. If she is as fit for this job as all of you think, then she should have been able to stand up within that national search with other people applying. I just want you to do what's right. I've been here for over 50 years. You know, parks are great for the kids. I have not heard one person talk about the safety. And that is not a Lancaster issue, that is a valley issue. We have crime skyrocketing. Do I have an issue with her receive, with her receiving more money than even those in LA? Yes. You're talking about how bad this community needs jobs. Look at how much money this city alone has given out in lawsuits. I'm sorry, that is, that is the city's money. That is the people's money in those lawsuits that you're giving out. I'm just asking you to be people of your word, to do what's right. And personally, if you want to disfame me or the group that I stand with, that's fine, because I know where I stand with God. And I don't have to defend myself. He will defend me. I have never done anything to threaten anyone here or any board member. All I have ever done is speak the truth, and I've spoken in respect. I'm asking you for the same respect and for you to give us the same truth. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close public comments at 10 o'clock. Oh, we have one more. You will be our last speaker.
Yeah, one behind me too, but
Yeah, we, they keep straggling in, so we're going to have to cut this off, folks.
Last meeting I was here, that we don't need speaker cards, and anybody could come and speak their voice, so here I am.
Well, thank you for coming.
Of course. First off, I would like to speak on the behalf of, well, not the behalf of, but a lot of these special interest groups do receive money. Palmdale Freedom Coalition was offered money, and we did not take it, so. I'm glad to see our tax dollars keeping people gainfully employed with the increased security by use of barricades and metal detectors at the door, things that were never in place during our fight for ordinance 1577. And the base salary of Rhonda Perez is asking for $299,750. Payscale.com, average entry level city manager as of December 12, 2022, $70,859, or $70,859. January 6 of this year, pay scale average of $93,062. Base salary, $51,000 to $185,000. Bonus, $225,000 to $15,000. Total pay, $50,000 to $181,000. Off Glassdoor.com, city manager in Los Angeles, estimated total pay for city manager is $125,059 per year in LA. Estimated total pay, or no, with an average salary of $82,262 per year. These numbers represent the median, which is the midpoint of the ranges from our proprietary total pay estimate model, and based on salaries collected from our users. Zipia.com, entry level, $40,000 annually. City managers make $76,188 per year on average, or $36.63 per hour in the United States. City managers on the lower end of that spectrum, the bottom 10% to be exact, make roughly $40,000 a year, while the top 10% make $142,000 a year. City managers make the most in California, Nevada, New York, and New Jersey. I'd like to question which qualification, qualifications Rhonda holds to be overpaid the average entry level salary of $70,859, $70,859, when her prior position was less lower than that of city manager. I insist that you stand by your word and do a national search for our city manager. Possibly spend that extra money on finding a larger hall to hold your meetings, so we don't have to wait outdoors. Otherwise, maybe a viewing monitor and better speakers outside, since you're pushing us further back from the door. Remember, we elected most of you. This is our city hall, and you work for we, the people. When government fears the people, there's liberty. The people fear the government, there's
Thank you. Last, last speaker? Come on up, you will be our last speaker of the evening.
I've been hearing a lot of
Oh, this one, like, I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I've been hearing of a lot of problems in our city and in this whole region. Division, crime, all these issues and all these problems. And I, I don't want to be personal, but if Ms. Perez was really worth $300,000, why do we still have all these problems?
Hi, team.
Kevin Shankman, feel free to unmute yourself.
Thank you. So my experiences with Ms. Rhonda Perez have been a little bit different than most. They've been in the capacity of representing J.J. Murphy, both in, with the city, with, on the same side as the city, and also opposing the city. And in that process, and the more than decade I've been involved with the city of Palmdale in various capacities, I, I, I think I've learned things that I think we can all agree are true. One is that being the Palmdale city manager is not easy. Nobody is knocking the door down to become the Palmdale city manager. And in particular, when Ms. Perez took over in her current position, Palmdale was a very chaotic mess. And it has not been easy, I'm sure. It is getting better, and that is in no small part due to Rhonda Perez. Rhonda gets things done, I think we all know that. And that may threaten some of those who prefer the status quo of the chaos that has dominated the city in the past.